December sixteenth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting of Union County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Balkum for our invocation.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we just come to you tonight seeking wisdom and guidance. We ask that, and it is our prayer that our decisions be pleasing in your sight. Whereas we enter into, whereas we're in the midst of the Christmas season, Lord, that we would all be conscious of the sacrifices that you've made and that we would all praise you in what we do. And, Lord, I just ask that you lead, God, direct us in your will. We thank you for your love, your protection, and your forgiveness. All, we know that all good things come from you, and we are truly blessed. So, in Jesus's name I pray, amen.
If everyone would please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. We have a couple that signed up online and one in person. The first person we have is Stephen Worgen. I think I probably have something I need to give directions for first, before the speakers begin. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are a resident of Union County, and indicating the municipality in which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with our clerk to the board. So, again, we do have a couple of speakers. We will start with Stephen Worgen.
Good evening. My name is Steve Worgen, and I am a resident of Union County, and I live in the Heritage South subdivision of Indian Trail, and my topic is the sewer smell. Good to see everybody again. You've probably been wondering where we've been, right? For those new on the council, on the, on the board, we were here for the last couple of years periodically talking about what is a severe problem we have in the Heritage South subdivision. And the reason we stopped coming is frankly a show of good faith. At our last meeting, Commissioner Merrill, you put forth a vote, and that initiated the pilot program. And we left that meeting just pleased and wanted to say personally, thank you for doing that. We decided, I'm on the board in our neighborhood, and we were very adamant that people ought to leave you alone. Since you did this, we don't need to occupy your meetings and just inundate you with as many fifty, sixty, seventy people, which we've done in the past. Our thought was let this pilot program move forward, and let's see where that goes. John over at the water department has been outstanding. I will tell you that he's worked with us. He's been in constant communication with us. The infrastructure's been put in for the pilot program. There's been a number of steps, albeit they have been delayed on a multiple of occasions, but we are moving in a forward manner. So, to that, we're really appreciative. So, why are we here now? We understand that this is going to come to a conclusion at some point, we think, within the next three to four months. At that point, there should be strong evidence to whether the water treatment idea, the solution provided by the water department could be effective. Unfortunately, that's when the hard work starts. Because once that, that is clearly determined to work, let's assume positively it does, then this board has to make a decision to vote on it. We know budgets are coming up, and those conversations, I do a lot of work in the public sector, so I know they're getting ready to gear up. We hope this will be part of those conversations. So, we just wanted you to know that we're here. We haven't gone anywhere. Out of an effort to be respectful to this body, we have not inundated you. We look forward to this spring. Once we get these solutions, I'm sure John will be very communicative as to where that's going. I'm going to leave on a following note. Any of the new commissioners, you will not be clearly as far down the road on this as many of the older commissioners are. We are going to email all the commissioners and ask if we can have an audience, a few of us, just to bring you up to speed on everything that has happened prior to this date, and we hope you'll allow us to meet with you on that. I'll close by saying that five years we've been at this, and as you know, we're a fifty-five-plus community, so you would have a lot of older folks in that community. In those five years, several of those folks are no longer with us. It's unfortunate that the last several years of their life, their quality of life was not what we expected. Please hear us when we tell you we need to get this resolved. I know you do the best thing you can. Thank you for hearing me. I appreciate it. Merry Christmas, folks.
Chairman, commissioners, attorneys, et cetera. My name is Ed Green. I live in Union County. I live on the border of Monroe and the Indian Trail. I'm here to speak with regard to the senior nutrition program and the waiting list that they have, the problem with that. I've been involved with the program for two and a half years, and it's safe to say that I've seen, you know, the joy, the happiness that the, our clients have when I, when I bring the meal to them. I have a primary route, which is in Unionville, and so that's out into the rural area, and many of them are farms that are just trying to survive, and so you certainly see the benefit there. But I've also done many routes in Indian Trail, which is a different demographic, but, you know, the problems are there as well. And so, the fact that we have a waiting list of people who we, we really want to help, that's the name of the program, it's a struggle for us to, the drivers who go out and, you know, they've made it their mission to serve others, and yet they feel this, you know, the irony of pushing back and saying, well, we can't serve anymore, even though you're there to serve and you want to serve, we can't. And that's a problem. And it's, it's been made aware to me that some of that's regarding money, and we need to find a way to, you know, put some more aside for these people who need it. But the other point I wanted to make was, as I said, it's, it's, it's almost a fully a hundred percent volunteer program. And so, in my, one of my tasks with, with our program is that I'm involved with a focus group, and that's made up of the volunteer drivers to see if there's a way that we can generate more interest and get more people involved to serve. And it's not easy in the middle of the day or the middle of the morning to kind of stop what you're doing and go someplace and pick up food and then deliver it to so many houses and all that. So, it's hard to find people. But in the past year, we've made a strong effort to do that, and we've gone out to the Rotary Club and the Kiwanis and churches. We've had, we have, in the middle of a program now, to notify churches that we have this need in this program. And churches, you know, by, by name, pretty much want to serve the people in the community, and so we're appealing to that. Because of these efforts, the, the, the short list that we've, the long list that we used to have of looking for drivers each day has shrunk around dramatically. And so, we've made that effort to get more people involved, and they want to be involved. And then they see that the numbers of meals that we're delivering is now dwindling when it used to be six or seven or eight, and now it's three and four. And that's because we don't have enough funding to get, give out more meals. So, we've taken care of our part in our, to provide, you know, the, the force behind this program, and we're just hoping that maybe, you know, we can find a way to put aside some more funds to help more people. It's, it's not only just senior nutrition and their food, it's also senior wellness and well-being. And so, if mentally they're healthy and happy because they see people coming to the door to say hello and bring food, we all, we all gain. So, thank you for your understanding, and hopefully you consider that.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do, Mr. Green. We had another person sign up here tonight, Carolyn Burrows.
My name's Carolyn Burrows, and I live in the Alton Community. And congratulations to the new members, and I love the officers. I've been here before. Some people know that I continue to ask for the reopen the short line water program. Since two thousand and twenty-two, there hasn't been anything done, and there's not been any applications allowed since two thousand and twenty-two. So, that's, that's, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm asking to, for the new people, and I'll be glad to get some information to you. And I hope you have a very merry Christmas. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is item twenty-four dash eight twenty-four, a public hearing regarding rezoning petition for a PUD amendment, CZ two thousand and twenty-four dash zero zero eight, DORMI. I will open the public hearing and recognize Bjorn Hansen, senior planner for comments.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Does anyone happen to know the password for this computer?
I do not.
There you go.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Manager Matthews, this is a rezoning, two thousand and twenty-four dash zero, dash CZ dash zero zero eight, called the DORMI rezoning for the applicant. This is a conditional rezoning, so there is a site plan associated with it. It's actually not a rezoning. It's implementing the PUD six rezoning, which encompasses a lot of the area along Ray Road near the intersection of Tom Short. This is an undeveloped commercial portion in front of a self-storage facility opposite of the Coles. And so, this is proposed to develop a twelve thousand square foot office building, medical office more specifically. So, there's a site plan associated with the application. It's for all office uses, including medical office, and there's a natural surface pedestrian trail that they want to build within a portion of the floodplain that would be allowed as long as it's natural surface, and it, and is committed to meet our unified development ordinance requirements. So, this is the actual site plan. Again, this is Ray Road. This is the entrance to the self-storage facility behind it. The building would be closer to Ray Road with the parking to the rear. This area, all to the map north, is in the floodplain, and there would be a little bit of on-street parking along the driveway, and the remainder would be back here to the west of the site itself. The existing conditions, again, you can see it's a large undeveloped piece of land, looking north on Ray Road. It's already sidewalks, curb and gutter installed, looking south. And immediately to the south, there's a residential neighborhood. In terms of development in the area, there's a vicinity map. So, again, this is the parcel. The subdivision to the south is the one that we were just looking at on the previous map. In terms of environmental features, again, you have this large floodplain. This is the five hundred year floodplain, so it's a little bit larger than what we regulate, but it's illustrative to show that there is a lot of floodplain going through the area, as well as a creek, and they're going to detain the stormwater events as prescribed in our recently amended development standards. So, that is a little bit more stringent than what we previously would have required. It's a fifty-year storm instead of twenty-five. Doesn't mean it's double the intensity, but it's a little bit bigger than what previously would have been required. In terms of zoning for the area, again, you can see the, the six, which is, if you see the legend on the left side, the PUD six. So, this is already zoned for business to allow this office use. This is just an implementation requirement to actually show the site plan associated with it. And this is the same zoning designation that applies for the undeveloped commercial property to the north, as well as the Coles to the south of Tom Short Road. In terms of transportation, there's no funded improvements in this immediate area. This is expected to have a fairly low amount of traffic impact, a few hundred vehicles per day. But the, the other way of looking at it is that it also provides medical services in closer proximity to residents in the area, so they could actually be making shorter trips to accomplish the same purposes. Ray Road has about twenty-two thousand cars a day. Tom Short's seven thousand cars a day, but there are no funded improvements in the immediate area. The land use plan does call for this area to be a commercial node. The yellow is for single-family residential, which is what's already built, and the commercial, the community center small is, it's what's shown at the intersection of Tom Short and Ray. So, this is consistent with that plan. Because it's commercial in nature, the school system was not consulted for comments, and public water and sewer are available to the site. Public feedback at community meeting was required as a part of the rezoning process and was held in early October. Three residents attended and asked questions about the process for the rezoning and parking requirements. No changes were made as a result of that meeting, and we haven't received any additional comments from the public since then. We always reach out to municipalities if the rezoning is very close to their boundaries. This is close to Marvin, and they responded. They don't have any comments about the, the site plan or the proposed use. So, we always provide pluses and negatives for any proposed rezoning. The negatives is that it would increase impervious area immediately adjacent to a floodplain and does add additional activity in the area. So, that would increase the number of cars in the area, turning movements in particular. However, this is consistent with the land use plan. It's in a urbanized part of the county where these types of uses are expected, and having uses like these in proximity to residential areas could make it more convenient because it's a shorter drive. And the development of the specific site, it shares access with an existing commercial use, so that reduces the impact on Ray Road. So, we recommend approval on the planning board, or I'm sorry, the land use board, acting as the planning board, reviewed this in November, and they also unanimously recommended approval, citing the consistency with the adopted plan and the limited traffic impacts of the proposed use. So, the applicant is here to provide any additional information that you may wish to hear. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Hams.
Thank you, ma'am. Bjorn, if you can go back to one of the maps that shows the proximity of this property to the residential, that'll work. So, I guess my concern, and this is one of the negatives that's listed here on the report, the proposed use would increase impervious area immediately adjacent to a floodplain, increasing the potential for flooding in the area. And I believe that we've got agreement that right now what's being planned is fifty-year storm mitigation. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, since the, since the applicant's here, I would be curious to know if the applicant would be amenable to increasing the stormwater mitigation due to the proximity of the residential area here with this, with this parcel.
That would, that would be a question for them. So, if you want to call them up, we can do so.
Yeah, if the applicant's here and wouldn't mind coming up.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Howke. I'm here on behalf of DORMI Equity Partners. This is Rob Taylor, also with DORMI Equity Partners. So, as a part of this development, this, the Morning Star development that, that exists right there, there, there is a retaining wall that was designed to help address the, the stormwater issues, and that's already in place. Did you have anything?
Yeah, no. So, when Morning Star Storage built back behind there, they accounted for that floodplain and built the retaining wall and elevated the land. So, if you look at the site, it's a pad-level site, already pre-graded. So, what that has allowed for in our discussions is to ensure that there's that proper drop-off in between where our site down into the floodplain to then account for some of that additional kind of runoff, if you will. So, making sure that it's not going into the residential, and then also having this being a medical site, we've, in terms of addressing that and ensuring that it all flows properly back into, into that. As part of that, Bjorn also mentioned, having that be, that floodplain is a heavily dense kind of wooded area, and what we wanted to do is just to make that a little bit more of a, a little nicer nature, like walking trail for the residents as well as the employees, the medical that would be utilizing this. And we wanted to help maybe, quote unquote, clean up that site into the floodplain a little bit. So, just to help ensure, like exactly what you said, I think, help to promote drainage and also the intersection, if you're familiar with that Tom Short Ray Road intersection, just a lot of densely wooded, overgrown shrub brush right there. And so, for the site that we control, we want to help alleviate that and make that like cleaner, more natural type of site.
So, so with that retaining wall there with the storage unit facility, you know, how much, I mean, if we had to put a number on this, I mean, how much storm, or, you know, what type of storm event would this be appropriate for? Are we talking about fifty? Are we talking about seventy-five? I mean, do we have any kind of information on that? Because again, my, my concern here is, it's not that I'm, I'm in opposition to your project, but my concern here is, is that I, I don't want to have a negative impact on the current residents here in your backyard with flooding.
I'm trying to think. I think it flows to the north. So, the, you know, the area you see, it, it flows to the north towards Mecklenburg County. So the, you know, the area you see, it flows to the north towards Mecklenburg County. The issue of flooding, you know, again, this is a 50-year storm. We hear about 100-year storms, 500-year storms. I think last fall in the Wesley Chapel area, for certain areas, it was a thousand-year storm. So what you're talking about is just how long the water's going to stay on site. And they are going to have some detention for their water that accumulates as a part of that storm, and then it'll get released. But the floodway itself, they, like was said, there's actually a wall that was built to create more developable land. That's why the floodway goes around the building, because they actually elevated that. I mean, the fact that it's doing a 50-year storm, just me, a 50 and 100 in an instance like this, the fact that they're retaining it is what matters, not so much that they're staying away from it. There really isn't a significant difference in what you're going to get beyond what the 50-year storm is going to provide. Once you're beyond that, it's so large, you know, you look at the overall area that's been developed, and the fact there really aren't any ponds anywhere else on this picture tells you that it's, it's pretty much already set in stone how this area is going to behave.
Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak at the public hearing for this matter?
I'm not the clerk, but no one has signed up.
And ma'am, I do believe that the team has some additional slides to prevent, or to present that may help you.
Okay, great.
Good evening. So again, I think you're a little bit familiar with the site, but to show again, this is the site on the west side of Ray Road, just south of the intersection with Tom Short Road. The Morning Star Self-Storage Facility is just here to the west of the site. There's an MSA Swim Center over here as well. This is the residential neighborhood. Here's an aerial shot of the same thing. Here's the Morning Star Facility, and this is, you can see some of how it's built up above the floodplain there. There's a private road here that goes along the south of the site that runs into Ray Road. Here are some visuals of the site. This is looking from Ray Road toward the intersection with Tom Short. Here's the facility. Here is a six-foot privacy fence, and here's the residential neighborhood that's to the south of the site. And here's the site itself, as you can see, undeveloped site. Here's some of that, you know, brush that Rob was telling you about. Here's a view down that private road. You can see another good look at the fence here that already exists, and this is where the building would be. This is looking from the private road across the site back toward Ray Road. And again, you see the self-storage facility on the left. As Bjorn showed you, the current zoning for the site is PUD six B two. This is not a rezoning request, it's a site plan and building elevation approval, so that's the PUD amendment is what the applicant is seeking. It's a one-story, 12,000-square-foot medical office and office building. And again, the site plan is here. Again, Ray Road running at this. Here's the private road and the fence to the residential neighborhood, the Morning Star Self-Storage Facility. Here's the 12,000-square-foot, one-story building. The parking would be here. And here's the natural surface walking trail that we were talking about. Here's some building elevations, just kind of 2D from Ray Road, from the parking lot, but we also have some renderings that make it a little easier to see, at least for me. So this is sort of a little bit of an aerial view from Ray Road, looking, here's the privacy fence and the private road, so the Morning Star is not pictured, but it would be back here. So this is the view from Ray Road. This is on the sidewalk on Ray Road, and we'll just kind of walk around the building. This is from the bottom of the private road where it runs into Ray Road. This is along the private road, still along the private road. And then this is from the parking lot with the Morning Star sort of to your left. And then from the parking lot, and then again, this is the natural surface walking trail. And Ray Road would be on your left there. So again, kind of an overview, but that's the site and the applicant is seeking the PUD amendment. So thank you for your time, and let us know if there are any other questions we can answer.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Did I hear say there will be on-street parking on the private road?
Yes, there are a couple spots. Go back to the, you can see them here next to the building.
Okay.
And then some, these oak trees will be added along there and in the parking lot as well.
May I ask the approximate value of the building, cost of the building? It'll be taxable value, how about? Ballpark is fine.
Approximately three to four million.
Great. And what do you estimate with approval, how long do you estimate construction time?
Less than 12 months.
Less than 12 months?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have tenants that would already lined up to occupy this, or will you be seeking medical tenants?
So both, so we do not have any formal commitments pending this. It's hard to get anybody to commit pending this outcome. So once this has its, it's primarily going to be, as we'd said at the community meeting, it is highly likely that this is already existing medical in the community that has outgrown, right, and has long wait times. I'm also a resident of this community. I live a mile from this project, actually, so this has a very personal component to us. And so through the fund I run, the real estate, we are, we found this opportunity and said, hey, this is something that we think will serve us well. It'll help expand these medical services. Unfortunately, this area is, in our opinion, extremely light on medical services to serve the existing community, and there's just not a lot of expansion opportunity. So for this purpose, I'll share that, you know, we're talking with several groups that are more in the Plaquemine market, just up the street, about a half a mile, that, you know, they're in 3,000 square feet and they need five or six. So it's likely that we will take this 12,000 and probably split it into two, and have two 6,000 square foot tenants of existing medical already in the community to help further serve the residents of the community.
Nice.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We do not have speakers signed up for the public hearing. Are there, is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak but did not have a chance to sign up? Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing. Next on the agenda is item 24-862, Proclamation for Cervical Cancer Awareness Month in January 2025. I will recognize County Manager Brian Matthews for this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is, last year, the board approved the proclamation. Last year, Ms. Kristi Chambers did a presentation, actually brought that to the board. She was unable to attend tonight. She is asking for the board to adopt the same proclamation for the January 2025 Cervical Cancer Awareness Month. And I'll try to answer questions if I can, but this is a request from Ms. Chambers for the board to consider that proclamation.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that the board adopts the proclaiming January 2025 to be Cervical Cancer Awareness Month in Union County.
Thank you. Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is 24-843, Service Award Recognition. I will now recognize Julie Broome, our Human Resources Director for this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. We recently held our fourth quarter service award program, and we were able to recognize several employees that reached service award milestones. There were about 61 recipients that we had for this quarter, and we were able to recognize over half of those in the program personally. The county service award program begins at five years of service and progresses in five-year increments. For this particular quarter, we recognized 33 five-year recipients, 11 10-year recipients, four 15-year recipients, 10 20-year recipients, one 25-year recipient, and two 30-year recipients. This was a pretty large group for us, and there were a lot of smiles and appreciation in the room for all of the dedication and commitment that these employees have shown to Union County. We would like to share a short video with you this evening that captures some of those recognition moments. Unfortunately, all of our employees can't attend these meetings, so this gives an opportunity for you to see this information, for friends and family members of these participants to see this information, and of course, their colleagues to join in and celebrating with them. I also want to thank the board members that were able to join us for this meeting, and just let you all know that you have an open invitation anytime you want to join us for these programs that we do quarterly. Again, I'd like to extend our thanks and appreciation to all the employees for their service, their dedication to our community. Thanks to the public communications team for coordinating the video, and I hope you all enjoy.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Q4 Service Award Ceremony. As you can tell, we have a very large group today. Today, we will be recognizing 37 employees. Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations on five years.
These two gentlemen have 90 years of experience in the construction trade. Wrap your head around that for just a minute. Forty-five years each. It's mind-boggling. I'll thank you very much for watching.
It's great. It's great to be recognized for your efforts, and the county does a great job with recognizing their employees. It's inspiring to hear some of the stories, so it's a great thing to do for morale. My only regret is I didn't come to work for the county earlier in my career, because the people are great. They seem to care about their employees, and they take good care of us. So it's just a good environment to come to every day.
It's so wonderful to be able to work for an organization that truly puts so much value on the folks that are truly serving the residents of Union County. So it's very humbling, and it's affirming, and it just really reiterates why we do what we do.
We appreciate why. And in the fire service, there is a tradition, after 20 years, you get a leather fire helmet. So this is another gift we would like to give to YWAT.
It really does feel like a sense of accomplishment. I've been with the county for 30 years. I started out with the county as a receptionist for the county manager, and I've been able to grow and develop. And when I came to the county, I didn't have a college degree, and the people that worked with me really pushed me and encouraged me to do that. So along the way, I was able to go through college and receive my bachelor's degree. When I started, I was 21, as a very, just shy person, and with all the resources and people along the way encouraging me, I've really flourished, and now I'm a supervisor, which I never thought that I would be. But with all, with everyone in your corner, it's such a great place to work, I've been able to accomplish a lot.
I guess for me, it's just, I feel like I'm really being appreciated, and feel like a part of the team. When I say the team, I'm talking about Union County government in general, and it shows the appreciation that the work that's being put in by the employees of the county. For me, again, I know I stress the word family, but it does give a sense of family, absolutely cohesiveness.
Wow, what a great turnout. I mean, it's amazing to see this many people come out and want to support your coworkers and celebrate them. Thirty-seven folks today, I think that's one of our largest classes to celebrate all of our employees here. First off, I want to thank you for coming. Second, I want to thank our chairman and our vice chairman for coming today. I believe J.R. Rao has come to almost all of these, if not all of these, while he has been on the board, and that's important. He's coming to see and listen to you and understand the impact you have on the county. And the vice chairman couldn't stay, he had to leave, he had something to go, but he has been to several of them, and I appreciate that they come, because that helps them make connections for the work you do. So when they're making decisions about the county, they understand the impact that that has on you as our employees. I heard one of the folks, one of the speakers, say that, that sometimes you hear people say, well, you're lucky to work for the county. And she said, no, the county is lucky to have you working for them, and that is absolutely right. We are so lucky to have every one of you working for the county, because you are what makes this the best place to be. You do have a servant heart, and I want to say thank you very much. I hope you have a great rest of your day.
Well, that was pretty awesome. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Ms. Broome or Mr. Matthews, specifically, will we be invited by email or notified of the next quarterly to make sure we can attend? How exactly will we be notified?
Yes, we will send you those and put those on your calendar if you'd like.
Excellent. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And I recognize someone sitting on our panel. Had an anniversary, Mr. Jason K. And I was so shocked and stunned when I saw you on the video, how many years?
It has been five years, my pleasure of five years. I won't say what it feels like. It's north of five years, but I've been here for five.
Well, congratulations, and thank you for the five years. And we look forward to five more, or more. Are there any motions regarding requested revisions or amendments to either the consent agenda or the business agenda?
Madam Chair, I have at least one, and a question for the chair, if I could. I have a question about one of the items on the consent agenda, which is not pertaining to the actual item, but if I could leave to just mention that rather than pull it from consent, if that's okay. It's item 24-825, Budget Amendment, County Manager's Office. I would like to ask the county manager if he could arrange in a future meeting a presentation by the Strategy and Innovation Team to learn more about what they're doing, who the people are involved, what the metrics are. So if we could just, if you could arrange that presentation of some kind in a future meeting, that's really all I wanted on that item.
Yeah.
I do have an addition to the business section of the agenda. I would like the board to consider an item concerning the dissolution of the Monroe Union County Economic Development Commission, and add this to the business portion of the agenda. agenda at the location at the pleasure of the chair.
Okay. We will put that right before we do appointment of Commissioners to the Board of Committees, Boarding Committees. We'll do it right before that.
So it'll be prior to Item 24-851.
Right.
Thank you, Madam.
Are there any other amendments?
Madam Chair. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we add consideration of a resolution in support of repeal or amendment of Section 3K dot 1 of Session Law 2024 dash 57 to the business portion of the agenda.
Okay. Can you repeat the name? It was resolution?
Yep. So a resolution in support of repeal or amendment of Section 3K period or dot 1 of Session Law 2024 dash 57. That is in reference to Senate Bill 382.
Okay. You'll leave that right there for me. Thank you very much. Is there anything else? Okay. All those in favor of the agenda as amended? All those say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those oppose? Okay. We will move forward. We are now at the business portion of our agenda. The first item on business is Item 24 dash 762, the Opioid Settlement Funding Plan Update. I will recognize our consultant, Ms. Michelle Lancaster, for an update to the board concerning this item.
Thank you very much, Chair Merrill.
And welcome.
Board members, glad to be here.
Welcome back.
Thank you, but thank you very much. I have three items that I'm going to be covering tonight. So this is the first item that I'll be walking through. There are three things that I've been working on since I've retired, that, two of them that I'm shifting my engagement to folks on staff or otherwise, and we'll talk about that, and one that I'm going to continue to work on, I believe. So I'm going to start with opioids and I really want to provide an overview. I'm going to give some background information here so that some of the new board members may not be as familiar with the opioid settlement. This is something that the county engaged in in 2022. I think I'll try to provide as much detail as I think would be helpful to you to understand this. And then, I'm always happy to answer any questions, provide some of the initial reports and presentations that were done that might help you understand this a little bit better. This is some information that frankly, we've been working on, like I said, since 2022. North Carolina entered into settlement with several other states. I think everybody's aware of the nationwide opioid crisis and North Carolina, on its total, is receiving a little more than $1.4 billion over the next 18 years to tackle the opioid crisis from those settlements. Union County will be receiving more than $17.7 million over that same time. This has a very long runway, as you can see. As I said, this started in 2022. The expectation is this goes through 2038. Many of these funds were front-loaded, so there's a little more that the counties are receiving on the front end of this, and then it kind of tapers off and gets a more steady stream in the later years. And the information that I'm sharing today is through the end of the fiscal year for the reporting that was due to the Attorney General's Office in October. The North Carolina County Commissioners Association really played a large role in these settlements and specifically working for counties to ensure that they receive these funds directly. So 80% of the funds were coming back to counties so that they could use them in the communities that were most affected by the opioid crisis. Counties who are responsible for law enforcement and many places, Health and Human Services, and the families that are impacted the most. There have been several different settlements. The largest of these were occurring in 2022 with additional settlements following in smaller amounts, but they've all followed the same principles that were agreed to in the original work. I would add, and I'll probably say this a couple of times as I'm talking about this, this was very unusual and unique for counties. This is very new. Counties had never been given this 18-year runway for something with money coming year over year with very specific expectations. And additionally, this is not a space that counties had typically worked in. So while there may have been partnerships, there were partnerships that we had for outside agency funding. There were some human service relationships. The county itself does not have staff who have been working in the opioid space. So we've really done a lot of work to, I think, build the program that you have today. This really provides for you the programs that were funded. So for board members who were here and then for the newer board members, there was a group of community partners that came together, spent several weeks, a couple of months, really working on what a recommendation would look like. There's a lot of guidance that continues to grow on how these funds need to be used. There's a lot of expectation on how these are used. And so this group, along with county staff, put together recommendations that then came to the board for ultimate action on the things that should be funded. And what you see here are the programs that were funded and the amounts that they were funded at. The recommendation for program funding was for a three-year funding cycle. Again, that's slightly unique to what counties typically would do. When you have an annual budget cycle, these funds go into special revenue funds, so we're able to use them year after year a little bit differently. We also, it was a strong recommendation from the advisory group that provided the recommendation that we wanted the county to invest in things for a longer period of time to see what worked, to give it some time to see where that investment was made and where you felt like you were actually seeing a difference so that when you make those future decisions about funding, that you're doing that based on data. And so there's a lot of data that's been collected, started to be collected, that you should expect to see as this first three-year tranche ends. And so Wingate University is providing some oversight. It's actually through Dr. Shanta Dubay, who is a public health professor at Wingate with 25 years of experience in the substance use area. She is leading the work group and leading the data collection work that's happening. She's working with the logic models with all of the programs, partnering with staff to ensure that you're getting the bang for the buck that you're looking for. The other thing that I would add is even for the nonprofits who work in this space, I think what they're seeing and what we hoped we would see is while we know anecdotally they're doing really great work in the community, the work that they're doing doesn't allow them to sit and really think about, what are the measures that we want to have? What do we want to take to other funders that might want to invest in us? So they really get the benefit of this resource now because of the funding from the opioid settlement so that you can see how they can grow their work, their good work that they're doing in the community. The next one, treatment courts. Judge Hux and her team have started a family treatment court. They also plan to use these funds to start a veterans' treatment court. And so they have hit the ground running with that work in the family treatment court. Naloxone distribution is for the Human Services Group. Public health to distribute naloxone if needed. They have not spent any of those funds to date. They are still using state funds for naloxone and those would really be used, these funds would be used for partner agencies who perhaps don't have other mechanisms for getting naloxone, making sure that they have that in place. Bridge to Recovery is a local 30-day treatment program here in Monroe, and they do good work. Ground 40, many of you are probably very familiar with their six-month program for men coming out of prison and homelessness, and they do great work. Cameron's House of Hope is working with kids who have been affected by substance use and Mike Whitson and what he started there. And then New Beginnings is doing medically assisted treatment for folks who want to use that to get themselves off of their opioid addiction. And then there's a partnership with UCS and the Sheriff's Office for a pilot program that got added that they have started in two of the school clusters. And then you can see the funding there that goes with those for the three years.
If you don't mind me interrupting you real quick, what are the two clusters for UCS?
It is Porter Ridge and Sun Valley, and it's the middle and high schools, so four schools.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
It's an anti-vaping program, I believe.
Right. It is a harm reduction program. It includes vaping and drug use, and it's a whole, it's an evidence-based program that they are implementing in those four schools.
Michelle, so I'm certainly not an expert on opioids, but is the concentration on vaping and how does that pertain to opioid abuse?
No, so it's, I mean, so I'm not an expert either. So, and there may be some people in here who have better answers to that, but I think we know that there's some gateway activities there for students, and so you're really trying to stop that, even starting those behaviors that then lead them to use other substances. And again, what they're using in the schools is an evidence-based program that's used in other parts of the country. And they're doing it as a pilot to see in those clusters, those two. My understanding from Mr. McRae at UCS is that those leaders at those schools were really anxious to get something in place. They felt like they had some issues, particularly with vaping, that they were having a hard time getting their arms around how they're dealing with that in terms of discipline in the school. And so they want to see if they use this here, do we see some outcomes? Again, they're working with Dr. Dubay and the team to come up with performance measures. So they'll be measuring things that you'll be able to look at and see if they're having the impact that they hope to have.
So at this point, we don't have data about, you know, how many folks are enrolled or?
No, they just started. This is, you'll remember that this was a later ad to the program, so I actually talked to Jerry today. They have just started, but they've been meeting with Dr. Dubay and the team, and so they're starting that data collection. And so you should start, I think, this time next year, you'll be able to see the data that they've started to collect.
Thank you.
Some of the key milestones, it's actually a really good segue, that all the programs, again, with UCS, are coming along a little bit later, so they're just getting started in this, but working on metrics, logic models, they've got those completed using RedCap, which is their data collection system. It's a HIPAA-compliant research electronic data capture system. And so they're collecting the data. Two quarters worth of data have been collected from everybody but UCS in that program. They have started their initial data visualizations so that there will be a dashboard that folks will be able to access, and I'll show you a sample of one of those. We've also completed the state reporting that's required, and I would add that it's fairly extensive expectations from the Attorney General's Office on the reporting. And we also, the funding here was captured by single audit, so we also went through the audit with the county's auditors and provided them with quite a bit of information as they were doing that work.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
If you can go back one slide. The state reporting, you said that's been completed?
Yes.
Have we seen any of that? Has that been sent to the board?
It was not sent to the board, I don't believe, but we can do that.
Please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
This, again, is just an illustration of one of the socio-demographic slides that they've started putting together. This work is being completed, and so we'll make sure that you get a link to the website so that you can look at the dashboard data as it's there, so you'll have that to access. And the additional information, I think what they're putting together is really well-done and impressive to see the work that they've put in. And again, that the partner agencies have really embraced this and wanting to make sure that they're getting good measures and putting things together that make sense for the work that they're doing and for the investment that the county's going to be making with these funds in the community. So tonight, I mentioned that there are a few things that I'm transitioning, and this is one of the projects that I'm transitioning, working to transition to staff. And so the recommendation from staff and myself is to add an opioid settlement program coordinator slash strategy analyst to the county's strategy and innovation team. That person will manage the work group, work, the reporting requirements, and the community engagement that needs to occur in this space. This will allow the county to develop some in-house expertise in this area that will continue to be funded through settlement funds through 2038. As I mentioned earlier, this is not work that counties have traditionally done, so we don't really have people on staff who have worked in this space as their primary function. And so I think adding somebody to that team, and Commissioner Sides asked to get a report from them, I think that that's the right team for them to be connected to. And if you have any questions about that position, I think Clayton can help answer those as well and how that will fit. And so the action you would be taking is to receive the information on the opioid settlement plan, update the pay and classification plan to include a new job classification of opioid settlement program coordinator slash strategy analyst, pay grade M, authorize the addition of one FTE in the county manager's office for the job classification of program coordinator slash strategy analyst, sorry, and also adopt a budget amendment number 18. As I mentioned at the beginning, there are some smaller settlements that continue to come through, and so there's one that's coming through for FY '25 in the amount of $86,677.12. And so this is that fourth action that is budget amendment 18. The plan is to utilize those funds for the new FTE and the additional audit testing that was required that costs $5,000 to do that single audit work. And the next year, you should expect to see, after you get the person on staff, the additional reporting will also make sure that you see the reporting that's already been completed, the finalization of the dashboard info, additional engagement with the funded partners, and the development of recommendations for the next allocation of funds that should be coming in '25 and '26. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
So the opioid settlement coordinator position will be funded from the proceeds of?
Correct.
The settlement.
Correct.
Thank you.
And that position would be only, I mean, it's not a forever position that would eventually have to be picked up by the county. When the opioid funds run out or whatever, that position would be, would end also, correct?
That is certainly, I think, what is anticipated. The board can always make a decision to continue a program if they want to, but it's our, it's our opinion that when the program and the funding ends, then the position would end and go away. The board could make the decision not to do that in the future.
And again, this has such a long runway, 2038. I hope that you're all here in 2038. I'm not sure if the rest of these folks are going to be here in 2038 to talk about this program. What I would add, I think, I agree with Brian, I think what you could also expect is the folks who are working on this, if there are things that are working, that they may look for additional funding sources, you know, over that period of time that could backfill that. But you do have funding through 2038, so that's, you know, a pretty darn long time for grant, what you would typically think of as a grant funding source.
Madam Chair. Michelle and maybe Clayton, as far as the auditing cost, that is required with this settlement? Am I understanding that correctly?
So it reached a dollar threshold that made it a requirement of the, of single audit.
Okay. And I'm sorry, who makes this requirement? Is this, is this part of the settlement?
The local government commission, I believe, is actually who makes that requirement.
Okay. All right. And if we can go back to the full-time employee for just a second here, so if I understand correctly, this is over the course of 18 years, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And we're already three years in, so we're looking at 15 years that we would be essentially assuming another full-time employee? And would this full-time, what would be the plan here? Would this full-time employee report up to our assistant county manager, the deputy, or would that be under?
Yes, under the manager's office and would report to one of our assistant county managers and then ultimately to me.
Okay. And so the expectation of this individual would be then to kind of pick up the management of this program, would be to essentially facilitate the expenditures of the money being received from the settlement?
Correct.
Look for other opportunities with other settlements? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. I think, you know, if you'll remember, you know, when we came, so we had, you know, a large group that met for quite a while to come up with recommendations, you're going to need somebody to facilitate that on an ongoing basis. I mean, you could do this every three years. You may decide you want to fund every year. I mean, that's going to be the board's decision, but I think you need, what this person would be expected to do is really manage all of those pieces, the relationship with the folks in the community, the relationship at the state. So the State Association of County Commissioners receives some funding in this area too to provide guidance and support for the reporting and all the things that are expected after receiving these settlements, so somebody who can engage with those folks to do that. Also, I think, you know, I've gotten a lot of, a modest amount, but several folks ask about, well, you know, this didn't fund all the nonprofits that are working in opioid use, all the programs. And there are probably some other good ones out there that could be funded, you know, having somebody who can engage and vet and really, you know, get more involved in that part of the community work. Again, I'm like a broken record on this, but this is just not something that you have county staff who have been immersed in this. It's not how substance use and behavioral health has been managed across the state. Those things have really been managed differently and outside of local government. And so bringing this in now, and again, with this expectation that for 18 years, you're going to be asked to make these decisions about how to spend this money in this space, having somebody who can be your expert and that you can have some confidence in, you know, what you're doing as you spend those dollars.
Where would this person be located? Or what, what building?
At this point, I believe that they would be in our patent office, which is where our strategy and innovation, which reports to the county manager's office. So, they would be in our, what's our, our patent building is where they would be located.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Go ahead. So, just for clarification, we don't feel like we have the in-house resources to do this function currently?
That would be my opinion, yes, sir.
Okay, as part of your, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yeah.
As part of your presentation, you mentioned the groups and the funding they would receive. But I would like more information on the specific programs they intend to, or how they're going to use the money. And I would also like to know the timeframe, which the board will be updated on where things stand rather than just once a year. Plus, I'd also like to know the metrics that will be used to measure the effectiveness of how each group is using that funding to see, maybe in year three, we found one approach was not effective and make the decision to divert those funds somewhere else or add it to an existing organization getting funding because that seems to have the biggest bang for the buck. So, I'm interested in knowing how we're going to be, receive over what periods, information on the effectiveness of the program and how the money is actually being spent.
Yeah. And we can, absolutely, we can make sure that you get that. I do want to make sure that I was, I don't know that I was clear about this. Those, the funding for this was already approved by the board, those allocations. So, this started about a year ago, the work started with the two quarters of data collection that I mentioned and the key metrics. But we will get you all that. And I'll get you the initial reports, too, because I think that'll help kind of inform you about all those decisions that were made back in 2022 and 2023 to get to this point. And then, you should expect that '25, '26, you should be asked to make additional decisions about how those funds are used and that you're asking the exact right questions. What were the data that were collected? What were the results? And that's really what the team is building out right now.
And exactly how each group that's receiving the funding is using that.
Absolutely.
For instance, Ground 40, let's, and I'm just using a firm example, don't feel like I'm singling you all out. But if they use that, say, because they need to upfit one of their facilities to be able to handle more clients, that's where half the money's going, things like that, rather than, a little more in-depth than just saying, this group is getting this amount of money.
Absolutely.
So, there is an action requested. So, with that being said, I will make a motion to receive information on the county's opioid settlement plan, update the pay and classification plan to include a new job classification as follows. An opioid settlement program coordinator or strategy analyst with a pay grade M authorize the addition of one full-time equivalency, FTE, in the county manager's office for the following job classification. One opioid settlement program coordinator or strategy analyst. And four, adopt budget amendment number 18. Are there any questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, my only heartburn with this action being requested is the hiring of a new full-time employee. You know, that's, that's my, that's my reservation with this. You know, I mean, I was on the board, obviously, when we made the decisions about where to allocate the money. And so, you know, I understand, you know, why we're doing what we're doing with the funds. However, my concern is, is that, you know, we're hiring someone to do essentially something that I, maybe I'm missing the mark. Maybe I'm not understanding the full details here. But we're hiring someone to essentially do something that I think that we have the ability to do in-house. You know, we've got a fully-staffed management team. And I think that, you know, this is something that, you know, maybe we can divvy up responsibilities. Maybe we can have, you know, multiple people doing multiple things here. But I don't know that it merits the addition of a full-time employee. And so, if that is, you know, if that is a part of the motion, then I'll have to vote no.
So, I would like to ask the county manager, do we have staff that can divvy up the responsibilities to oversee? Michelle, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. I think Union County has received $9 million in one settlement with the opioid.
We've received a little less than $4 million total to date, but you're going to, you'll be getting money every year until you get to that 17 million. And it may grow with additional settlements.
So, the funds for the motion are from, or will be
Yes, ma'am.
used, not from the taxpayer dollars at Union County. It's going to be, you know, this position is going to be funded through the money we're receiving. So, I guess my question is to the county manager, do we have current employees that can divvy up the responsibilities to oversee all of this opioid money being sent to the county? Do you have someone on staff that can manage this opioid settlement?
Could I take that one step, step further before you answer that? Perhaps you could provide more specific functions for that position. And that might help us understand that this justifies a dedicated individual. Could you, as specific as possible, could you lay out the job responsibilities of this position?
Madam Chair, if I could, we looked at multiple jurisdictions, and the way they did this was they added a position to specifically oversee this. We looked at multiple jurisdictions, and we actually built our job description based on those other job descriptions that we got from all these other counties that we looked at. So, I can just read through some of these. Develops and monitors and reports on the opioid settlement program's budget expenditures and compliance with state and federal guidelines. Monitors and reports on the impact of opioid settlement program initiatives, ensuring alignment with community needs and goals. Continuously audits and evaluates opioid settlement program and other program metrics, outcomes, and recommends improvements based on data and stakeholder feedback. Oversees contracts with opioid provider agencies, ensuring proper use of funds and evaluating program effectiveness. Facilitates community engagement to encourage public education and support, answering questions, connecting individuals, and sharing resources and information regarding opioid funding. Coordinates the county's opioid settlement work group, including scheduling meetings, developing agendas, and maintaining meeting summaries. So, those are some of the specific job duties that this individual will be doing. And again, we mirrored that off of what other counties are doing.
Also, I want to, I want to keep, want you to keep in mind is that the initial request for Wingate was to help us with data acquisition. It is not expected that we are going to continue with their services permanently. So, all of that work is going to have to migrate to the county. All the, all the data, all the, getting the data, reviewing it, providing those reports is going to be a function of what we have to do. So, just keep that in mind as well. It's, ultimately, we're going to own the entire program. We're not going to be farming it out over time.
So, the funding for Wingate University will go away because of the data collection responsibilities?
We won't be funding them. Will we have, that money will come back into whatever you fund in the program.
What exact skill sets are you looking for in the individual to fill this position? Is it, is it an accounting background? Is it a working with settlements such as this? What are you looking for in the ideal candidate to fill this position?
I think somebody who understands grants management, although this is not technically a grant, it operates like one. So, somebody who has that, somebody who has skills in reporting and connecting with the state, understanding their systems, as well as understanding data analysis, trend analysis, understanding all of those things, which is why this is sort of a natural fit with strategy and innovation because that's what our analysts do internally for our departments is they do some of this type of work.
So, a motion is on the floor. Are there any other questions? Yes?
What is the salary for pay grade M?
Market, or midpoint is about $91,000.
$91,000. We get $86,000 the first year.
That, I want you, we have almost $4 million. They're just taking the $86 million and adding it to it. We have over $4 million that we've received to date. So, I don't want anyone to think that we're behind. We actually have more than enough to cover the program plus additional.
I have a question. So, last year, Wingate University got over $500,000 to collect data, correct?
For three years.
Okay, for three years.
All of those programs are funded for three years.
Even still, at $91,000, what we're paying, we paid them over a half a million dollars.
Well, you didn't just pay them to collect data. It was actually to build the system. So, it's building the entire system from the ground up. So, we didn't have a system.
Okay.
So, they're building the system and collecting the data.
And I just want to clarify, Union County is not funding this. This money came to Union County because of Union County's need, because of our opioid incidences.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I understand that completely.
Yeah.
It's, it's still funds going dispersing throughout town. We need to be responsible with these funds.
Just wanted to be clear that we're not funding this.
Right, right.
It is, you know, the fact that Union County has an opioid problem. And so, in the settlement, Union County received these dollars to help remediate adults, kids that are, you know, you know, consequences of adult behaviors and, you know, finding a way to treat the adults and take care of the children while the adults are being helped.
Madam Chair, all right. Michelle said this, and I just wanted, you're asking the right questions. Keep in mind, and she, the counties don't do this kind of work. This is not something that is normally within our function. So, we were starting from scratch and having to figure out how to actually put a program in place. It is anticipated that we will wean ourselves off of these outside entities and bring this in-house. Obviously, we will still have to fund Bridge to 40, I mean, Bridge to Recovery, those types of agencies. But we will ultimately be responsible for reporting, managing all of those aspects. But we didn't know how to start a program. We've never done this before. So, that was the reason we worked with Wingate and some of these other partners is to start the program.
I'll just share that this is reminiscent to me when Union County Public Schools received $27 million in grant funding. And we had to create positions to oversee that $27 million grant fund. And when that grant ended, that position ended as well, which is why I asked the question I asked earlier, you know, this position will end when the money ends. So, I just thought I would share that with you, with our experience with, you know, large amounts of money coming to us. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, so we, I did make the motion. All those in favor of the motion as listed in the agenda, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion fails.
All right. So, I do, I do need to understand something. There are still things that we will obviously need to do. So, the budget amendment is still related to funds that we're receiving. So, keep that in mind. Whether you approve the position or not, it sounds like the board is not going to. There, or that at least at a minimum needs to be done to receive those funds. So, if the board could, can at least consider accepting the funds as far as the budget amendment goes, that would be, I'd appreciate that.
Well, I would say that commissioners that were, that voted no, perhaps if you would recommend a motion that you feel comfortable in supporting, so we can accept the funds, whatever objections you might have, if they can be addressed in an alternative motion.
Mr. Manager, are you suggesting that you need a motion at least to accept the funds?
And that was my understanding for the budget amendment.
Okay.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
You're talking about budget amendment 18?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah. So, so again, you know, my concern was the addition of the full-time employee. I don't have a problem with adopting the budget amendment number 18. So, I'll make the motion that we adopt budget amendment number 18.
Question, in adopting, in the motion to adopt that budget amendment, does that include the allocation for the position in question?
No.
No.
It's my understanding that, that's, the board's already said no to that. So, this is really just receive those funds. It goes into the opioid program. We'll have to figure out how we manage that.
Okay.
Do the commissioners have available a copy of budget amendment 18 to look at at this time?
You may want to look at a copy of that. The version that I'm looking for at budget amendment 18 simply allocates revenue of $86,677 and produces operating revenue of $86,677, all of which is connected to that position.
It's the case, and we'll make sure we bring back a different budget amendment. I wasn't sure that it was specific to the position. But if it's, if it is, then we'll bring back a different budget amendment.
I'm just picking up the discussion and what the manager needed as well.
Certainly.
We may want to tailor something to that.
So, we'll have to table that.
Sure. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. So, mechanically, what happens in not adopting a budget amendment? Does that mean the money's just sitting somewhere and we're not able to fund these organizations until we have a new budget amendment?
Keep in mind that we've already received a very large amount. And so, this was just additional funding we received. So, no, it's not, it's, it's not going to hold anything up.
So, these programs, this distribution is already in place?
That's correct.
The funding's already going out?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
All right.
Madam Chair, for the record, I'll rescind my motion.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 24-823, South Piedmont Regional Autopsy Center Update. I will again recognize our consultant, Michelle Lancaster, for an update to the board concerning this item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This one, I'm not asking for any action on. So, this is just providing you information on a pretty big project for the county that many of you may have heard from, heard about, the South Piedmont Regional Autopsy Center, or the SPRAC. To give, again, some background on this, and I'll provide some context here. The state has provided funding for a capital expenditure for a new regional autopsy center in Union County, as well as some operational funds, which I'll get into more specifics about that. Medical examiner services in North Carolina is incredibly complex. I would say it's a pretty complicated operation. The state has a chief medical examiner who currently, her name is Dr. Michelle Aurelius, who works in the Department of Health and Human Services, the Division of Public Health. There are also locations in the state that provide assistance to the state to ensure that medical examiner services are carried out throughout the state. Very familiar with the Mecklenburg office. That is one of the offices. I worked in Mecklenburg before I came to Union County. And for a period of my career, that was part of my responsibility to oversee that function. And for about 20 years, the Mecklenburg office had served as a regional facility and through a contract with the state, providing regional autopsy services, of which Union happened to be a part of that until 2023. And it was along with Anson and Cabarrus Union. They also provide services to Gaston County and Cleveland County. Those counties still receive services from Mecklenburg. Those counties still receive services from Mecklenburg. Um, I also just want everybody to to kind of have a frame of reference that all deaths that occur in in the state do not result in an autopsy. Specifically suspicious deaths, deaths of children, those would require autopsies. There's some investigation that happens at times to make sure that that bodies are autopsied that need to. Even with this new regional center, um, so and and like I said, in twenty twenty two, or twenty two, as I think when they made the decision that Mecklenburg was going to cut Anson, Union, and Cabarrus. And so at the time, I was still working with the county, obviously at that time. Um, this was something that we, a few things when we found out about it that were problematic, I think, from from the county perspective. One was that we didn't find out about it until about three weeks before it was actually going to occur. And the move was going to mean that bodies autopsied for Union, Anson, and Cabarrus were going to now be relocated to Raleigh for that function. And so we found out about that. We expressed our concerns specifically for law enforcement. While they're not the majority of cases, you know, every case is not a a law enforcement jurisdiction case, but many of them are. And lots of times detectives or officers want to witness the autopsy that's happening. So moving from doing that in Mecklenburg County to Raleigh and then working with the, making sure that you schedule that at the right time, we knew was going to be problematic. We also knew that, um, that the state had a waiting list for doing autopsies. They have had a problem in the past and I think continue to have hiring issues for hiring forensic pathologists. And so timeliness was something that we were concerned about, not only for law enforcement, but also just for community members who might have a death that has to have an autopsy and they need closure and want that. And so we were concerned about that. So we reached out to the state. We frankly didn't get a lot of response, um, except for, you know, to our concern, except for that our bodies would now be taken to to Raleigh. And so from there, we actually asked the board to ask for legislative item from that for that year's legislative agenda from the delegation to support a regional or a local solution to that problem. Um, I would say that, um, I believe that the delegation was very supportive, although not very promising. I think they thought that this was going to be a pretty big mountain to climb to to change a system that is pretty entrenched the way the ME system is in the state of North Carolina. So, um, we made that request, our board members made that request, our law enforcement partners helped plead that case, and we actually were successful and received funding of twenty million dollars in capital funding from the state to build a facility, and then two million dollars in recurring operational funds. Um, along with that, however, our original ask was to take care of Union, Anson, and Cabarrus, because those were the three that were immediately impacted. And as things can sometimes happen in Raleigh, um, it got tweaked a bit. And you see the the list here that became the South Piedmont Regional Autopsy Center, nine counties, Union, Anson, Cabarrus, Montgomery, Roan, Stanley, Moore, Richmond, and Gaston. Uh, the dates that are beside these are dates that we asked the General Assembly during this most recent session, which I'll talk about in my next item, um, to give us some flexibility. The state had an interpretation of the original, uh, language in the legislation that we would not open up our facility until we were ready to take all nine counties. Um, I believed, we believed that doing a phased approach made sense and that we could potentially find a short-term solution before there was a long-term facility built. And so we began to work on that, and we got support to give us that flexibility. And so these dates are estimated dates that we actually provided, but we also got language that gives us flexibility. If we're not ready to take those counties, we have flexibility and and when we can do that and how we can make that happen. Tomorrow at two, at five o'clock, we will be able to start taking Union County autopsies specifically. And so we've really worked the this entire last twelve months on getting to this point. Um, as I already mentioned, the first two things there about Mecklenburg and that relationship and how that worked. Uh, we, you know, began to find a local solution, we received these these funds. And then we've had this long road of getting contracts with the state, the last of which you actually adopted at your December second meeting um, for individual autopsy fees. The way those are paid, if a person without getting way in the weeds, but if a the county of residence from where a person dies has to pay a portion of a fifty eight hundred dollar fee, and then the state pays the remaining portion of that fee to the place that does the autopsy. And so, um, I'll I'll also give you some numbers in just a second, so you can kind of see the what we're talking about in terms of of volume for all of these counties, the most recent data that we have. The current fee is fifty eight hundred dollars per autopsy, so the county of residence pays thirty six hundred twenty five dollars, and the state pays twenty one hundred and seventy five dollars. And so, like I said, tomorrow, we're going to be ready to start taking Union County autopsies. And, um, this is something that we've really worked diligently. Um, the the temporary location that we found is at Union County, uh, atrium at the Monroe Facility. That hospital actually has a morgue. It was built, it was a county hospital that has a morgue that really hasn't been used for many years, except for for body storage. It's actually in really good shape for the purposes that we need. We have identified a forensic pathologist who is ready to start working. I'll tell you a little bit about him in just a minute. Um, and we've spent a lot of time with the hospital. I I really want to thank those folks, Denise White and Michael Jordan, for their commitment to to fi- to finding a short-term solution, which will probably be a few years, to use their facility and really partner with us for something that's important to the community. This data, death data that I'm able to get has a lag, which is why this is twenty twenty two. But this gives you some idea of the magnitude of the number of cases. So for Union at the bottom, while in twenty twenty two, there were eighteen hundred, more than eighteen hundred deaths in the county, only seven hundred of those were autopsied, I mean seventy, sorry. And so you can see that it's, you know, about one every couple of weeks. Um, and so we're going to get this operation up and started and really learn from those cases with, um, with our physician that we have who is on board to start those, Dr. Prevett. And are we ready to do that tomorrow? And then the answer to that is yes, for in short term, we have our location identified, that's really what you need. And then you need a forensic pathologist. And as I mentioned, one of the issues that we were concerned about originally with Raleigh is that forensic pathologists are incredibly difficult to find and recruit. Um, it's not a large pipeline, for one thing, and the ones that are in the pipeline can really set where they go and where they want to work. And so we're fortunate that Dr. Prevett, who lives in Charlotte, currently works in Mecklenburg County. He actually grew up here in Union County, has done work for the state office, has done some work down at ECU where they have a facility, is really excited about the opportunity to build this facility and work with Union County and and building this regional presence that is unique, frankly, to the rest of the state. Uh, the funding model is unique, what the state is providing, as well as the kind of nine-county region that has come together and is prescribed by law. He is a forensic pathologist, again, with extensive experience. Um, we also, Union County is home to the former Chief Medical Examiner from Mecklenburg, Dr. Mike Sullivan, who has assisted Jonathan with really looking at facilities, thinking about what this would look like, thinking about processes. Um, Dr. Prevett and I have spent time with law enforcement, the DA, um, a lot of time with the state, kind of ironing out what this is going to look like going forward. And so we're all, I think, excited. I said, I'm actually, I want to see the first autopsy, and that's not like a fun thing to do, but I've worked really hard and I want to see this thing happen. Um, and he's, uh, he's ready, ready to hit the ground running. Um, and so what's next? And so we'll have our Union County cases, we'll be able to start. I think we have a good process, everybody's been informed. We have really good local medical examiners. I mentioned at the beginning that the system is complex, somewhat complicated. So there's the chief medical examiner, there are forensic pathologists who do the autopsy, the actual autopsy work. Then there are local medical, um, examiners in every county that are appointed by the state. There are nurses, nurse practitioners, dentists, EMTs. Um, we here have mainly nurses, nurse practitioners, and EMTs. And we're very fortunate that our local medical examiners, actually, many of them have been doing this for quite a long time. And they're they're very seasoned, very built into the system, understand Union County very well. And and they are so on board and excited about this getting started. And so over the next year, what we will begin to do simultaneous, really, with starting Union County, is start with Anson and Cabarrus, reach out to their law enforcement, their folks who are doing body transport, their local medical examiners. We don't have all those relationships yet, but starting to build those, figure out how they operate currently. How can we replicate that as close as possible to fit with what we think will work with this regional center? And then start taking their cases as well. Um, facility coordination with staff and the work that facilities will be doing in the long-term location, which, um, I think is going to be located on seventy four by the the sheriff's office, um, and and helping inform that. And then doing, again, this kind of is a theme with the state, there's a lot of required reporting, um, because this is still a state function. Everything that we do operates under the jurisdiction of the chief medical examiner and making sure that we're getting those reporting, uh, requirements for all the work that we're doing here in that space. And with that, um, that's really high level. Happy to spend any time answering questions, um, and spending time out outside of this venue to to talk more with folks and introduce you to Dr. Prevett, if you would like that.
Oh, is he here?
He's not here, but we will get him here. He was not able to come tonight.
Because we have been working on this for a good two years. And I just want to say, uh, thank you, Michelle, because I remember, um, getting the calls a couple of years ago when we were first on the board, when it it felt like overnight Mecklenburg County dropped us and all of a sudden we had no place, um, to go for autopsies other than, uh, transporting all the way to Raleigh. And then our law enforcement not being able to hop in the car and be at the autopsy when they got the phone call. Um, you know, they couldn't be there in in, you know, a three-hour drive to witness the autopsy. And, um, and one thing that what that I also wanted to add on was you we had a contract with a local funeral home to transport the bodies um, and and store the bodies, Union County residents, um, you know. So we had this local funeral home that would go to Mecklenburg, you know, take care of the bodies for us. And all of a sudden, now we're asking them to transport the bodies three hours to Raleigh. So it affected a local business, um, that
I'm so glad you mentioned that.
That we were partnered with.
Holland's Funeral Service, Jonathan Holland, if you know him, he's a great partner, has been a great partner in this space, has hung in there. His facility is right across from the hospital, he does provide storage and transportation. We partner with us other funeral homes as well. He does the majority of that work and has really been committed to that and and, you know, working through this, you know, having to go up and down. And and that, the the money that he gets paid for that is actually prescribed by statute. It is not a large sum of money, um, that they get. And and so they have really been committed, and and it has been a a a long journey here. But I think we're in a a really good space for going forward.
So I, you know, I just wanted to, you know, remember that, you know, because this was a crisis, you know, for all of these counties, especially Union County. And if it was your loved one that needed an autopsy and there were, it was a backlog in Raleigh, just imagine, you know, a Union County family not really knowing how they could lay their family member to rest and honor their loved one. And, um, it it was, it was a, it was a problem. And I just want to thank, um, Sheriff Kathy, Tony Underwood, um, Michelle, all of our staff, that when, you know, when we went to our state representatives, we did not get hopeful information. And, um, because Michelle did have contacts over in Mecklenburg County and knew Dr. Prevett, which, you know, his expertise and his licenses, um, would be exactly what we needed if we were able to do this right here in Union Ca- County. And, um, so I just want to say thank you and share that with the rest of the board. This was a crisis, it was a problem. Um, and I'm I'm happy that we were able to get this done in two years and not five or ten years.
Thank you.
Any other, any questions? Yes, Mr. Sodds.
Um, uh, on your timeline, will we be able to handle any other counties besides Union at the current atrium facility?
Yes, yes, Dr. Prevett believes so. I mean, we want to, we want to spend some time with just the Union cases to see. You know, again, our volume data has got some age on it, so we want to make sure we're not getting it over our head. But and just last week, he, I mean, I think we will be able to take Anson and Cabarrus pretty soon. And the facility can accommodate a lot. The outlier really is Gaston, and for a couple of reasons, actually. The number of cases is is a huge, is they're just an outlier in the number of cases. Um, but they also are continuing to get their services at Mecklenburg. So they have a more convenient location right now, and so we've been intentional. We have let them know, I I've talked to their manager's office a couple of times as we were working through this, that they would be expected to come on board when a new facility is open because of those things. And they understand that, their legislators understand that, that they would be expected to come on when we had a new facility, because we wouldn't be able to accommodate them in in the temporary location.
Okay, can you, uh, give us the up-to-date status of the new facility and the timeline for its completion and activation?
So currently, we have both the design and the construction manager at risk contract, or scopes out to bid right now. Submissions are, um, due in January, and we expect, um, selection in February at so at some point. So I think that the timeline on that is about roughly a a year or so for design and then a couple of years for construction.
So we're looking three years
That's right.
Plus before we'll actually start to open for business. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, um, first of all, Michelle, I I don't know that I share your enthusiasm for wanting to see the autopsy.
I don't blame you.
But, um, but, yeah, it is, um, it is good that, you know, we're starting, um, you know, doing Union County autopsies on Tuesday. So, uh, I just had a real quick question regarding the reporting.
Yes.
So, um, you had a bullet there about required reporting. Um, are we talking about like medical reporting up to the state? Is that what we're
So there's a little bit, there's a little bit of, yes. So Dr. Prevett will have certain reports that are required, as you would imagine, for every autopsy that have to go up. Then we have monthly reporting requirements. We also have requirements on the funding that's coming for the capital expenditure. So we've got lots of state expectations and the operational funds that are coming that we would need to report. So monthly, quarterly, and annually reporting for these, these dollars.
Okay, and, uh, final question about Gaston. You said that that was an outlier, and and I'm sure that you probably had numbers up there. Yeah, thank you. Wow.
Could you share that with with the board?
Yes.
Keep in mind, this is twenty twenty two.
Yeah, I I my 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 understanding is that the numbers haven't gone down. So I will, I've tried to get the twenty-three data, as soon as they have that, they'll give it to me, but I'll let you have this data as well. You're welcome to this.
I mean, I'll say that Moore County and Roan County surprised me compared to their population. So, um, but those are total deaths, not not number of autopsies, but still, you know, it could be a predictor of needing more in the future, I'm not sure.
And and as far as, um, like Gaston's relationship there with Mecklenburg, so they're, they're obviously tied in there with Mecklenburg doing, um, medical examination. But is, I I guess, I guess where I'm going is, we see possibility there where Mecklenburg can't handle the caseload and and we expect to have some spillover from Gaston, is that what you were alluding to?
I mean, we we will get Gaston. Gaston is a part of our nine-county region. Eventually, they will be a part of this this regional
Okay.
Center. And they actually requested that, so that that is how that will happen. And Mecklenburg's aware of this. I mean, I think, you know, I think they're probably more interested in kind of timing. I think what Mecklenburg sees, what their chief medical examiner has shared with me, and and because Dr. Prevett works there as well, is that at some point, Mecklenburg alone, their case number is going to be all that they can handle. That while they could do the re, you know, serve this regional field for some period of time, that eventually, you know, we were just the first time that that was going to happen, that eventually the other Cleveland County, Gaston County are probably going to get that same notification, that they cannot accommodate that. Um, and so, you know, it, we will start with nine. The other thing that I should mention is, you know, in conversations with the state, with state DHHS, what I've really tried to impress upon them, and and I I believe this, is we want the whole system to be, to function well. So whatever this center does that can help the entire system function, we want to be able to articulate that and help them be better as well. This is only good for the community. It's not a, you know, we want to do something different in in Union County to be unique. It's how can the, can they learn some lessons from what we're doing? I think they're, they're getting a little more open to that, like, okay, what are you guys doing? How are you going to do it? Maybe there's some things we can learn from that. Um, I also should, um, to add in there, I I think I mentioned it in one of the slides, but over the next year, what we would expect to is to bring a staff person on board. So eventually, you will be asked, I think, to add, you have actually approved the staff position for this, a business manager um, that can start to work alongside as I transition away from away from this, to understanding the relationships, the, all the stuff that we're going to put in place, the processes, the procedures. And then you will be building out some additional staff. Dr. Prevett also would expect, you know, to come to work as an employee at some point. He's going to be a contractor at first, but he fully intends to join this as, as his full-time opportunity. But that will really depend on how, you know, how the caseloads come, how that, but we will bring you some regular updates so that you know exactly where that's going after, you know, we get started. Again, there's no, we'll say we're taking cases tomorrow at 5:00, we'll be able to do that, but, you know, we don't have a case typically every day. I don't know when the first one will be, but we'll, you know, hopefully in a month or so, we'll give you, and I can send you an email and let you know kind of where we are, and then we can do an update maybe after three months. Might be a good kind of litmus test of letting you know what that looks like, what the volume looks like, if we ran into any things we didn't anticipate.
Not necessarily a bad thing that we don't have a case every day.
Exactly, I know. I'm okay if it, you know, we don't get one until sometime in January. I think that's okay. February, March.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
The next item on the business agenda? Is item 24-826 legislative and state budget updates. I will once again recognize Michelle Lancaster for an update to the board concerning this item.
Thank you very much. And this is my last update tonight, which is the legislative update. I'm going to provide a brief overview of the most recent session, then I'm going to hand this off to Patrick, who's going to provide information on the county's plan for the long session that begins in January. This is another area that I will not continue to work on over the next year, so county staff will be taking more of this role on. And I'll just remind folks that you do have a state lobbyist, Daniel Baum, who, who does lobbying at the, at Raleigh on behalf of the county and has done that for many years. We have typically, since I have been with the county, have had guiding principles, these are the two guiding principles, to support legislative efforts that protect and/or enhance local governments' revenues and/or increase our local funding flexibility, and oppose any unfunded mandates and any initiatives that fail to fully fund services shifted to the county. And there's some reason behind these, some of these is we just want some general messaging to the, to our delegation members, but also we wanted some guidance for staff and for Daniel. When things pop up as session progresses, sometimes you're asked to make some pretty quick decisions about if you support or don't support a certain thing. So we wanted some guidelines for those. We have always, though, if there are items that we believe are sensitive to the board, always brought those to the board for, for input and guidance, and I would expect that the county would continue to do that. Just as, this is a recap of the short session that wasn't so short. They've changed every year, but this one started in April and ended on Friday of last week. So it was a rather long session with not a lot of, of activity, frankly, that local governments have become accustomed to probably seeing. So we had some priority items. These are the priority items that we had. We had a longer list of things that we were supportive of and interested in, but I'm just recapping the, the priorities. EMS base, basis funding, the regional ME office flexibility, which I mentioned in my previous presentation, we were able to get that. The ones that are in bold are the ones that we did get positive action on. We actually got that very early in session in the technical corrections bill. The General Assembly was, and our delegation was willing to hop on that one pretty quickly for us and take care of that. And then the third one, seeking additional clarifying language for some budget language from 2022 regarding $8 million that the county had been provided for land acquisition, design permitting, construction of, of the items you see there. We sought some clarifying language there. We actually didn't get that until last week, but we did get it in the, in one of the final, I think it was actually in the hurricane bill that ended up with a lot of things put in that bill. And so we did actually get that language that we had asked for. The last two items that were our priorities, seeking and supporting state funding to allow continuation of UCSD daily in-school tutoring program, we did not, we're not successful with that, and seeking legislation that would allow Union County water to sell water from the Yadkin Regional Water Project to the City of Monroe and others. We were not able to get those. And some of, some of that is that there was limited budget action and no individual projects were allowed to be a part of the budget. And there were also no capital projects that were allowed to be in this form of the budget. There was just a lot of back and forth going on at Raleigh. I did pick one item that I know has just been gotten a lot of, a lot of attention the last few weeks, opportunity scholarships and the funding that was included in the budget. And I was able to find the most recent data, which was updated on December 2nd, that in Union County, 1,052 students are receiving opportunity scholarships to the tune of a little more than $3.5 million from that fund. And I just, there's been a lot of conversation about that around the, the region and the state. There were a lot, there were some things that went on. There was a tax notification provision that we actually, the county gave a ton of feedback about what we didn't like about that. It was going to require the tax collector to go and physically put notifications in front of delinquent tax owner's property. We gave a ton of feedback on that and worked with the state association on that. We're, everybody was unsuccessful. It actually got put into, into law, but it actually got reversed last week as, as part of the hurricane bill as well. So we'll take that as, that our, our feedback did get some action a little later than we had expected. Again, the money budget, many budget that was adopted late in session had no member projects, no capital projects. It did have funding for additional students in public schools and at the community college, which I think is, you know, we're supportive of that, obviously. That's important to us and, and that funding. And there was an election going on, and then there was a hurricane, and that really took a lot, I think, of the energy of what everybody was focused on in Raleigh. And so I'm going to turn it over to Patrick now, but the session starts in January, long session. They will be there on January the 8th for their organizational meetings, and then they, they'll just be there for the day. They will break and come back at the end of January to actually start their work, I think, January 25th. We do have members of the delegation who are in leadership. Representative ARP has been, you know, one of the budget drafters for quite some time. I would expect that to continue. And then Senator Johnson was elected as the, the majority whip in the Senate, which is, which is great for Union County to have those folks in leadership in Raleigh. So with that, I'll turn it over to Patrick.
So the goal tonight is to try to get some consensus around what our 2025 legislative priorities will be. Some of these that you're seeing in front of you have come from staff, some of them have come directly from board members, and some are carryovers from previous sessions. So I'm going to go through them pretty quickly, but if you have questions on them, please stop me and I can go into further detail. Appropriate funding for placements and treatments, options mandated by EPSDT, that is, the Early Periodic Screening Diagnostics or Diagnosis and Treatment. What that is essentially asking for is the state to provide adequate funding for in-treatment facilities around the state. There is a extreme shortage of mental health in-treatment facilities for youth in the state, and we are pushing the state to provide adequate funding. Support North Carolina Farmland and Military Protection Act, this is an item the board took action on at the December 1st meeting to prevent foreign governments from buying land in and around military bases and certain other facilities. Seek legislation that allows consistent application of the Homestead Exemption Act. The Homestead Exemption provides tax relief for aging seniors at a certain income level. It, it is applied equally across the state, and if you look at a county like Union as opposed to a county like Anson, the median household income is drastically different. So this would encourage flexibility for additional tax, tax relief in some of the high-income, high-growth areas such as Union County to allow seniors to stay in their homes longer and pay a, a reduced tax bill. It would seek to repeal the provisions of Senate Bill 382 that restrict some of our downzoning options. It would restore, or we would ask to restore allocate funds to the NC Scrap Tire Program sufficient to cover all disposal costs. We do get reimbursement for some of that cost, but it does not cover the total cost. As an alternate, we can eliminate, we would ask to eliminate the provision that our landfill has to accept those scrap tires. We do have to do that now, but if they did, if they did take that away, we'd no longer have to accept certain scrap tires. Allow local government, this is a carryover, it's listed on a requested item, but it is a carryover to allow local governments to prioritize wastewater capacity based on commercial industrial as opposed to residential. We did not get much traction on that last year, but it is a priority that the board expressed interest in continuing to, to seek. Long-term concerns with wastewater alternatives. Currently, if we do not have a public sewer in an area, you can, you can get certain septic systems that we never see. They are self-permitted, there are new technologies that don't come before environmental health that don't come before building code. So we would ask for local input in some of those decisions that are being made in Raleigh. And then increase state funding for senior nutrition. In just a moment, you'll hear about some of the senior nutrition needs in, in Union County, and this was a priority of the board prior. Carryover items, establish drag queen performances as adult entertainment at adult establishments. This is a carryover. Seek and support state funding to allow continuation of the UCSD daily in-school tutoring program. Michelle talked a little bit about that we asked for that last year. Again, did not get much traction, but this is a program that the schools support, they want to continue funding. It's been proven successful, so we're going to ask for funding for that to continue. Support state funding for treatment courts, this is another carryover. We do fund the treatment courts in Union County right now through some of the opioid settlement funding. Treatment courts used to be funded in the state, by the state, and they took that away at some point, so we'd like to establish that just based on the success we've seen with some of those treatment courts. Seek funding for Union County jail construction and funding for EMS base station funding. In January, you'll see a presentation from David Hyatt, the EMS director, about the base staging, base staging plan. And there's about six bases that we are calling for in the rural parts of this county, and that would help with some of those, those stations. So this, this is the current list. Again, as Michelle said, session will be starting late January, so items can be added to this throughout the session. As items come up that we see, we will inform the board. But tonight, we would like a motion to accept this as your current legislative agenda, understanding that it can be amended moving forward.
I would like to get the, I just thought of this one. I know you had asked me for any additions, but I just thought of this late. What are staff thoughts on the addition of another Superior Court judge? Don't we have a courtroom space that's not being, that could be utilized for an additional Superior Court judge?
We can, we can reach out to the courts to see what the space needs are, whether it be a district court judge or a Superior Court judge. We can certainly reach out to them to see where the need is.
Well, I'm more concerned about Superior Court judge because the longer it takes for trials because the, the judge has a heavy caseload, that means the more of those proven innocent, I mean, innocent until proven guilty's in our jail. Length of stay continues to increase, especially for violent criminals, because these court cases take forever. And I don't know, I'm not an expert on the bottleneck, and I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but I would say all the areas under this, under that jurisdiction are growing, so I would think it would be time for another judge to help clear some of these cases.
Certainly have it.
So maybe Trey Robinson could be a good reference for you on that, and the Chief Superior Court Judge, get their thoughts.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other, you have questions?
You're, you're looking for a motion, correct, to move forward with this?
A motion to adopt this as your 2025 legislative priority list. Yes, yes, sir.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt this as our priority list with the inclusion of Superior Court judge.
Any other comments, amendments, changes? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Our next agenda item is 24-850, Senior Nutrition Home Delivery.
I'm going to introduce this item, but Janet Payne, our Executive Director for the Human Services, is going to be giving the presentation. This is a request from Commissioner Sides at the last meeting. What you're going to see tonight is options on how to eliminate the waiting list that we are currently on for senior nutrition. You will hear a little bit about the past few years, some of our criteria for how we qualify people. I will say that during COVID, there was a lot of money that was given by the states, by the state and the feds to address some of these. A lot of that money has gone away, and we have seen the effects of that decline in funding, and Janet will go into detail. But I'd like to thank Stephanie Starr, the Director of Community Support and Outreach, and I'd like to thank Andrew Friend for being here tonight, counsel on aging. So Janet, with that, I'll turn it over.
Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, Commissioner Merrill, and Vice Chairman Helms, and all of the commissioners for allowing me to have the opportunity to present tonight, and Commissioner Sides for your inquiry into this program. I'm excited to be able to share information with you. There are four different components of information that I would like to share with you this evening, and Patrick covered those briefly. First, I'm going to provide an overview of the program's services, and then a summary of eligibility and intake for clients and what that process looks like, participation data, and then two options along with estimated cost to address the goals that you had requested us to review, Commissioner Sides, which are to eliminate the waitlist of 586 people and to add weekend meals for home-delivered clients. The senior nutrition program goal is very simple. It is to enable senior adults to maintain or improve their physical, social, emotional health and, and mental health, and then also to be able to live independently in their homes as long as possible. And we achieve those goals through two different components. One is providing nutritious in-person meals in a congregate dining setting, and the second is to provide homebound, home-delivered meals for our homebound residents. And ultimately, the program does provide more than a meal because it includes opportunities for social interaction and education, and that is extremely important, especially for our senior adult population. The meals are provided currently today, Monday through Friday. And in order to be eligible for funding, federal funding and state funding, they have to meet the two guidelines of providing at least 700 calories per meal and one-third of the daily recommended dietary allowances. I brought some meals for you all to try and would offer you the opportunity to take them home with you, so would love some feedback on that at a future meeting. As I mentioned previously, senior nutrition services are more than just a meal. The program includes the opportunities for social interaction through something as brief as a conversation, when a homebound client receives their meals through a meal delivery, whether that be from a volunteer or through one of our frozen meal vendors or through Union County Transportation staff. And it also, this, this interaction also includes the educational opportunities and activities in the congregate setting, which are more robust and in-depth, and, and both of those components are valuable to the seniors who we provide service to. Ultimately, I want to mention that the engagement in this space does help reduce the impact of loneliness and isolation that can often and is often a factor in the lives of older adults, and that contributes positively ultimately to their mental health and well-being. The next component is service delivery, and our service delivery is provided by county employees and an amazing group of volunteers. I'd like to also thank Mr. Ed Green for being here tonight and, and for your participation in leading that effort. Each day, our part-time site managers coordinate packing warm meals at one of four congregate sites, and they pack those meals for homebound delivery as well. They serve meals and facilitate interactive opportunities at one of the four sites, which are listed here for you, Indian Trail United Methodist, Mineral Springs United Methodist, the Baysmore Active Adult Center in Monroe, and Wingate Baptist. And we're very appreciative to each of these partners for, for their partnership, as that does enable us to provide better service to our residents. Ultimately, the home-delivered service is provided in one of two ways. We provide warm meals that are delivered on 29 routes by an average of 220 volunteers each month. And the warm meal recipients must live near a meal site to be able to ensure that we're able to safely deliver meals within an appropriate timeframe so that they meet health regulations. We also provide frozen meals, and those frozen meals are delivered to recipients who live outside of this warm meal area. They are provided by a vendor, Trio, and also by Union County Transportation using a county pool vehicle. That funding has, for the Union County Transportation deliveries, has been enabled through one-time COVID pandemic funding, and that will be going away, and so we will be transitioning to only utilizing Trio moving forward, just because we don't have additional non-county funds to supplement that after this year. Union County Transportation will, however, continue to support the senior nutrition program, and I do want to mention that because currently about 50% of participants at the congregate sites actually use of participants at the congregate sites actually utilize Union County Transportation to to get to, from their homes or residences to the meal site. In terms of eligibility requirements, to be eligible for the program, there are two foundational components. One is an individual must be a Union County resident, and the second is they must be over the age of 60. Additionally, for homebound participants, there are four different components. They must be physically or mentally unable to obtain food or prepare meals and have no responsible person who is willing and able to provide that service on a daily basis. They must be physically or mentally unable to participate at a congregate nutrition site, and they must be unable to leave home at will, therefore not able to actually get to the meal site on a daily basis. It's important to note that during the pandemic, we actually had to transition everyone, including those who are eligible for congregate services, and they would have normally participated in a congregate site, to getting home-delivered meals. And so those restrictions that I just mentioned weren't applicable and have recently been reinstated for the homebound clients. Additionally, once someone is a client, we also complete assessments for all program participants. The congregate, congregate participants are assessed one time per year, and homebound is assessed twice per year, one of which must be in the home. This next slide provides an overview of our intake and screening process. So after a referral is received, our county staff meet with the client. They verify that those minimum standards of being a county resident and over age 60 are are met, and then we ask seven questions, but we start, and those questions are listed here for you. We start with the question, is the applicant able to leave home at will? And while that's listed number six on this priority screening, that's just how it comes from the area agency on aging. And so we start with that, though, because if the answer to that is that they are able to leave their home at will, we do not add them to the home-delivered waitlist. We instead provide them with information about congregate meal site services and provide them with information about Union County Transportation and and give them the opportunity to participate at the congregate sites. If they are unable to leave home at will, then we do ask the remaining six screening questions. During that initial screening process, we prioritize the client's needs, and then once a spot on, excuse me, prioritize the clients based on their responses and need. And then once a spot on the home-delivered route opens up, staff will review the map of clients in the service area. Right now, we're only moving clients that are eligible in the hot meal route area off of the waiting list onto active service, and clients are sorted in order of their assigned priority levels, one through four, one being the highest, and then also based on the time, length of time on the waitlist. And we are then able to have staff contact the client, schedule a home visit, complete all of the state required forms, which is DAS 101, which that takes about 10 to 20 minutes to complete for each client. So we don't do that on the front-end screening process. We only do it when a slot opens up because in addition to that time that it takes, we also have travel time, which, based on the size of the county, can obviously vary greatly. So this slide provides an overview of service volume, and in 2025, we served an average of 100 seniors per day in the congregate setting and 226 per day on our home-delivered meal routes. Through the self-reported screening, which is what we are allowed to do in the intake process, 85% of congregate and 76% of our home-delivered clients indicate that they are at or below the poverty level, and 73% of congregate and 60% of those clients that are home-delivered indicate that they live alone. We do not cap the number of congregate participants due to the goal of enabling socialization and the fact that the in-person socialization is so much more effective. Participation at congregate sites this year is actually getting closer to pre-COVID levels, so the numbers that you have on the screen in front of you hopefully will will demonstrate that. Before COVID, we were averaging about 1,300 clients per month, serving over 16,000 congregate meals annually. And this year, we're on track to, to serve 15,072 meals, which is about 1,256 per month. And so that increase, I think, is due to a couple of different reasons. One, the move last year to the Monroe-Baysmore Senior Center, and and that just provides additional opportunity and ease of access for residents in the local area. And then also, just an increased need to socialize. Seniors have have reported that they're lonely, and they want to reengage, and and they are looking forward to doing that. We also anticipate having some additional congregate participants due to the move that actually occurred this last week from Marshville to Winget. Our home-delivered numbers have conversely been steadily decreasing, and that is not due to a reduction in demand, but rather due to rising food and labor prices and limited funding, especially a decrease in the, most recently in in the pandemic and COVID funds, and then obviously we have an increase in the waitlist. So this slide depicts the home-delivered waitlist, and what you see on the right-hand side is a not beautiful map, but with with pins placed for the residents who are on our waitlist currently. As of the end of November, we had 586 residents who requested to participate and completed the initial intake screening process and and those seven questions. Ultimately-
Excuse me, may I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
Let me make sure I have this correct. 586 that are on the waiting list that have been vetted?
Through the initial seven-question vetting process, yes, sir.
Okay, that's not people that just inquired or referred.
That's correct.
They're basically approved for service.
They have completed the first step of approval. We will have to, when we have a slot open up, we will have to complete the 101 form, which is the full, about 20-minute screening form, just to to verify that their answers to those questions are still the same as they were when we completed the initial seven-question screening process. But yes, sir. That is correct.
How, how often do you have, would you say maybe 1%, 2%, 5% after the second round or final verification might drop off of eligibility?
I am hesitant to answer that because I don't have the exact answer.
It's not too darn many.
No, sir. I, I do not think that it is. I can tell you that, so the the next number that you see is the projected annual increase, and this may get to the question that you are asking. So since January of 2023, we're averaging 35 referrals per month of people requesting service from us. And of those, we have about 10 of them that are screened out and about 25 substantiated and added to the waitlist. And so then, after that point, unless there has been a circumstance change where they are no longer living in their home or some other situation that may have occurred, they would very likely remain eligible. Yes, sir. So additionally, in terms of the projected annual increase, because that was one of the questions that you had asked us to address over the course of time beyond the current waitlist, this is a guesstimate, but it's based on the facts that we have, based on our current intake. And we also know, as Andrew Friend mentioned in a presentation he did a couple of meetings ago, that the population of age 60-plus seniors in North Carolina as a whole and in Union County specifically is increasing. It's actually increased at a rate of over 5% per year since 2000. And currently, seniors comprise about 20% of our population, but that will increase to about 26% by 2040. So why does this matter? Just want to share a little bit. I think we probably are all on the same page about that, but ultimately, maintaining nutrition does enhance the individual's physical well-being, and also, as I've mentioned before, the interaction, socialization, and education enables us to support our senior residents with more than just a meal. Ultimately, if we can keep people in their home versus having to spend time in a hospital or nursing home, not only will they have a better quality of life, but the expense of doing so is actually at a much lower total cost. The annual cost of a meal recipient, based on Meals on Wheels data, is about $2,765 for 250 days, and Union County currently serves 260 days worth of meals, and our cost is about $1,400 per meal for those warm meals and $1,900 for frozen meals. So this slide just is a recap of the current meal recipient volume and projected need for next year. And on the next two slides, I'll provide you with operational scenarios for your consideration to address the 586 people that are currently on the home-delivered waiting list and also enable us to continue serving congregate residents, which we are anticipating, as you can see here, a slight increase in in that, but not a substantial increase, just because that has already been going back up, and so the current numbers are are trending in the direction that we would expect to see probably balance out. Not, not sure about that, but some moderate increase there. And so ultimately, we're thinking that if we were to complete those two activities and remove the 586 people and then have a small increase in congregate, we're estimating that our daily meal recipients would move from 345 to 931, excuse me, 326 to 945, I'm, 931 residents. So the two operational scenarios that we have developed are shown here. Cost will be shown on the next slide. Both of those options do eliminate the waitlist and do add the weekend meals for home-delivered clients. Both maximize our existing hot meal routes to enable about 10 to 12 clients on each. Most meal routes today currently only have about six to eight clients, and again, as Mr. Green mentioned earlier today, that is largely due to funding. This would utilize existing volunteers for the delivery of warm meals, so it wouldn't change that model at all. In both scenarios, additional county staff are needed to support the administrative work required to manage the increased clients, and that would include completing intake mandatory annual assessments. And the primary differences that you'll note here are that option one does add all remaining clients on the frozen meal program with delivery by our contractor, and option two also adds all remaining clients to the frozen meal program, but expands county staff positions and requires purchase of storage equipment and refrigerated delivery vehicles to be able to enable staff to deliver frozen meals and not have to be dependent on an outside third-party vendor. I will note that with option one, there is an uncertainty that a vendor may have the capacity to expand service to enable coverage of all additional frozen meal recipients, but both are good options. This is the final slide for your consideration tonight. The cost to serve county residents currently participating and those on the waiting list is shown here. And FY '23 total expenses were $895,000. FY '24, those total expenses were $875,000. The reason for the reduction there is because we had a reduction in service due to reduced availability of the one-time funding, as I mentioned earlier. The funding is still available, in part, the one-time funding this year, but that will go away at the end. Actually, it's, it's gone now, because as the end of November, it it was expended. Our costs in FY '25 are estimated to be $955,000. Those costs do include a 34, 34% increase in food expenses and about a 3% increase in staff expenses. And as mentioned, we are serving fewer homebound clients each year. In FY '23, we served 445 seniors on the homebound program versus 336 in FY '24. And to manage our fiscal resources this year, we are removing clients who no longer qualify for the homebound and not filling spots of seniors who come off of that program to try to manage and balance our budget for this year, and and we believe that we will be able to do that based on the current trajectory. And this year, we've served 289 unique seniors in that homebound program. So for FY '26, we are presenting three scenarios to you. The first one was just primarily for your reference. It was not, Commissioner Sides, what you had specifically requested, but I wanted to include it. And that represents just maintaining current clients. If we were to do that due to the loss of the one-time time funding, we would have a deficit of approximately $100,000 in revenue to cover expenses. Then option one, which eliminates the waitlist and adds weekend meals with service of the frozen meals provided by a vendor, is estimated to cost a little bit over 2.5 million, representing a deficit of about $1,560,000. And option two, which also eliminates the waitlist and adds weekend meals for home-delivered clients with frozen meals delivered by new county staff and county equipment, is estimated to cost 2.8 million and represents a deficit of $1,846,000. That option, option two, does include a one-time cost of $190,000 for purchase of refrigerated storage unit and two delivery vehicles. And so the ongoing operational need for that would be approximately $1,656,000. Obviously, those are estimates based on the research that we have been able to complete since this request and that may fluctuate based on inflation and other costs.
Janet, can you go back to the previous slide real quick?
I would be happy to do that.
Can you go a little more into detail about on option one, add staff? What is, what does your current staffing look like? What do they do, and why would you need to add another 1.5 FTE?
Absolutely. So currently, we have a program manager who works for Stephanie. That program manager actually oversees our senior nutrition program as well as our WIC program, which is Women, Infant, Children. And that is a nutrition program for, obviously, children and and their mothers. And then we have a senior coordinator, so a full-time senior coordinator that does the meal planning and management of staffing and that sort of thing. We have a social worker that engages with all of the all of the existing clients and then also engages with the volunteers to coordinate volunteer meal delivery and all of those components. We have four benefited part-time site managers, so one for each of the sites, and we have two part-time site managers that are solely admin-related. And so what these two operational scenarios would be doing is adding the full-time social worker and transitioning the part-time admin to a full-time admin. And then option two adds one and a half driver FTE as well. And the work that those people would be doing would simply be managing the 586 additional clients with all of, with with the two assessments a year and then any other ongoing activity that has to be completed.
And those assessments we do every year are required to receive some of the funding we do from both the state and federal programs?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So if if we, if we said, for example, we wanted to eliminate some of those requirements, we would lose additional funding in some of those, which would be additional funding the county would have to. So I just wanted you all to understand that even if we had the funding today to handle the meals, in order to do the assessments, it would take us over a year to get through the waitlist with our current staffing. Wanted to add that.
What is the item, add NSIP revenue?
Well, I apologize. So for every meal that we, may I flip to the next slide just for reference? So the second row down, that is beneath the federal and state row, under revenue, is the NSIP. And so for every meal that we provide that meets those calorie and nutritional requirements, the USDA provides 80 cents per meal. And so that revenue would increase. The reason that revenue would increase, even if we kept our current projected clients, is because when we receive federal revenue, like the one-time COVID funding that isn't revenue that is ongoing, like the HCCBG Older Americans Act funding, those meals are not eligible for, for that NSIP reimbursement.
So again, nothing, nothing we need action on tonight. Commissioner Sides, I know you asked for this. I know the numbers are pretty large. At, at current, we would not have any funding for this outside of one-time fund balance, and that is one-time money. We would not be able to continue this program beyond the end of the current fiscal year unless there was some change in revenue to the program.
Well, hold on. That's not my intention. Whether it is my colleagues or not, that's for them to say. One of my questions was, starting, say, January, for the remainder of the current fiscal year, what would it take to adopt option one? To begin, I realize you're not going to be able to take out the waiting list overnight, but what would the anticipated cost for the remainder of this fiscal year?
I would like to have the opportunity, and I apologize that I don't have a specific number for that, but what we need to be able to make that happen is we would need, as Patrick mentioned a few moments ago, we would need to be able to have the staffing to be able to begin going through and completing the assessments to get people off of the waitlist. And then we would also need, so if, if we were able to do that in an incremental basis, at, and I'm not sure, do you have the number that would be monthly? not sure if you have the number that would be monthly. I apologize, but I will provide that to you tomorrow. I would think that we would be able to incrementally begin to add some number of clients off of that every month and probably be able to begin that process by, well, if we were to hire people, that would take probably until February. And so if we started that in February, we could incrementally begin to remove clients from the waitlist at that point. And so it would just be the added meal cost at that point.
I don't think you quite understand me. I don't want to wait till February. The issue is that you literally can't put people on there without going through the evaluation process.
Right.
I get it, but we can start with what we have.
Yes, sir.
We can start. And that's the number I want. If we started January 1st with what we have and what we need before the end of the current fiscal year, what's it going to take for option one?
Okay.
Unless somebody's excited about option two. So is it fair to take that $1.5 million deficit and cut it in half for the remainder of the fiscal year? Just for sake of ease?
I want to make sure I understand what you're asking. So there's 586 people on the waiting list.
Yes.
Those 586 people would not start getting meals?
Understood.
Okay.
Because you've got to start the evaluation. You've got to confirm the evaluation process. Supposedly, from what you were saying, the 586 have already had an initial vetting.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then there's a final vetting.
Yes, sir.
Before you actually start delivering meals.
Yes, sir.
And so that would probably take a couple of months to go through that process. That's why she said February, because to be able to go through those 586 and actually get them available.
But you're starting January 1, or whenever this board so approves.
You would start the vetting.
You start the final vetting.
Yes.
And as they get vetted, they get meals.
Correct.
Okay. I understand you're not going to be able to get through it with the staff you have.
Yes, sir.
And there's a timeline for adding. But if you started today with what you have as far as staff, how many can we knock out? And how fast can we start getting the meals to them? And what dollars do you need to do it through the remainder of the fiscal year? Fiscal year 26, option one or two, that's a budget discussion for next year. I'm talking about what can we do now?
May I bring that back to you at your next meeting, sir?
It wouldn't, I'd say the worst-case scenario, it would be half, because you're going to get to a point where we can add about 10 to 15 people that we can clear from the waitlist every week. But you start adding those people to the twice-a-year evaluation. So at some point, very quickly, you're going to run out of staff time to conduct those twice-annual.
I understand that.
So I would say it's probably...
It's going to take time.
It's going to take time. So for me...
But if we can serve 10 people, January 1, the week of January 1, that's 10 more people that are getting meals.
So one thing that we could do, and I will be able to have this number for you very quickly, is adjust the warm meal routes that we are utilizing our current volunteer staff on. If we were able to increase the number of warm meal homes that we included on each route to the 10 to 12 that would be reasonably able to be done within an appropriate amount of time to keep the meals at temperature, that is something that we could do. We still have to complete the assessments, but that would be some, I would recommend, I think, starting with that process probably. But the assessments either way have to be completed.
Let me put it this way.
Yes, sir.
We may not have a final number to finish out the fiscal year. What's it going to take to get started tonight, if the majority of this board decides to? What do we need to get it started?
I would say more. Anything more than we have right now. Currently, what you're seeing is a projected...
Give me a number. Give me a number that's reasonable. For the first quarter of 2025?
At a minimum, a half a million dollars.
All right.
At a minimum.
Okay. All right. There's a number. You live with that as it getting started?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Somebody else please. If anybody else has questions, Brian?
Thank you for your enthusiasm.
He'll be amused.
I like it. I like it.
I'll just comment. I mean, obviously, we know, I've said this before in our last meeting, this is a crisis. And I'm sure you heard Michelle Lancaster, we requested to put this need for senior nutrition as part of our legislative update to our state legislators to make them aware that our county, their county, that they represent us in Raleigh, to make sure they understand that Union County is number two in the state for the fastest-growing population of senior nutrition needs. So, you know, Mr. Sod's, I agree with you completely. I mean, we need to get started yesterday, and that's why we've been talking about this. And we need to get our state legislators on board to understand that we need their help in securing funds to take care of Union County, number two in the state, for this growing aging population that needs meals. And so that they can advocate for us in Raleigh for state dollars and grant money to help us get started ASAP, just like you're desiring. So we put this on the legislative agenda. I think, you know, staff hears us, that we recognize, you know, the population of Union County citizens that helped make Union County now need us. And so I agree with Mr. Sod's. We need to work with staff and we need to work with you and Andrew Friend to, you know, figure out what can we do tomorrow to get started. And so I do agree with you. But staff, you need to get back with us because now you know that this is on our legislative agenda. And we recognize, we have received the information that's been presented to us. And now we need to give you time to say, okay, what can we do right away? How much do we need to cover this so we can move the needle off the waitlist? We need that information back from you. And we need to give the county manager and staff an opportunity to go back to the office and say, okay, how can we start moving this ASAP? But without giving them that opportunity, I don't know that we can do that tonight.
Well, we'll find out.
Because we don't have the number.
We'll find out real quick.
Okay.
All right. This presentation was made back in October. Okay? I'm not throwing anybody on the bus. Please understand. This was made back in October. This number has risen since October. Mr. Matthews, what exactly, approximate numbers, what is the county budget for this fiscal year?
It's over 500 million.
Okay. Do we have available funds in our fund balance for, say, $500,000? Is that currently available?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Folks, there isn't much more of a basic service to our citizens to keep them safe. And what does that mean? They're protected by these fine gentlemen in the sheriff's department, and they have something to eat. Now, maybe I'm so passionate about this because these are my folks. I'm in the age group. I know. I don't look it. But these are vets. These are widows. These are grandmothers, grandfathers, maybe great-grandmothers and great-grandfathers. You know, a county as rich as ours has over 500 people that are not getting a decent meal. Now, if these were kids, if these were kids, we wouldn't have a waiting list. It'd already be taken care of. Last week, I toured our jail. And the guests in our jail are served two hot meals and one cold meal a day. And that's, of course, required by law. They're required. But we have seniors out there that aren't eating as good as people in our jail. Now, I can't sit up here and say, okay, get back to us with this or get back to us with that. And with that, I make a motion that we appropriate $500,000 from our fund balance to start tomorrow working on this waiting list. And that's my motion.
Okay. So with that motion, I just want to ask, would you be able to distribute meals tomorrow if such motion passes? And I'll ask you, and I'll ask the county manager first.
No, we would not necessarily be able to. Now, I think, according to Janet, we could be more quickly on the home meal clients. But no, we could not start serving more tomorrow. It would take, I would take at least 30 days before we start serving new clients, in my opinion.
So do we have the staff and the volunteers to start asking those other questions?
Janet, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we would most likely do is immediately start to verify additional people on the waitlist and immediately be able to max out our hot route delivery.
Do we have staff available to begin doing that?
We have, we have capacity. I don't know at what level, how many more people we can take off the waiting list with our current staffing level is. We can take more off, but it's not going to be 586. And we would work up until the limit of that person's ability to continue to verify new recipients and existing clients.
And in the short term, if you all were to make this motion and it were to pass this evening, and it did not include any of the requested staffing adjustments in terms of the administrative part-time to full-time, then I would talk with the manager. And I think the best option probably to take action as quickly as possible would be to see if we could work with a contract agency, short-term, to bring on some staff, again, contract staff that could help ramp this up in terms of beginning to address some of those. But that would not be a long-term solution, obviously. That would, at best, be a short-term solution.
And Janet, I appreciate you bringing that up, because I would not want to move forward with hiring employees without knowing there's a commitment to this being a long-term program.
Understood.
If it was a contract basis, while we figure that out, that's certainly an option. But I would not want to hire full-time staff until we know there's a commitment.
So what I'm hearing is, you would, the process is final vetting first before anybody gets a meal.
Yes, sir.
But if funds are appropriated tonight, you could expedite or continue the vetting process. And once somebody's vetted, they get a meal. So if you started two, you know, whenever, how quickly after somebody's vetted do they get a meal? Final vetting. How quickly can you get somebody a meal?
A couple of days.
Couple of days?
Yes, sir. It's a matter of ordering the food. And if we have the funding for the food, it's a matter of ordering the extra meals.
Okay.
And then adding them to either the warm meal route that is driven by the volunteers or adding them to our vendor's frozen meal program. So it's just literally taking care of those logistics to make sure that we can get the meal to them.
All right. We know we need to feed these folks. We don't want to see our neighbors hungry. I fully understand that. Sometimes I question if this truly the role of government. I mean, we have churches in the community. We have organizations of goodwill that may be better equipped to actually do this job. Has there been any thoughts of partnering with churches and with other groups who are formed and who take great pride in the good work they do in the community? Has that been something that we've tried to incorporate into the program?
No, sir, not to date. We have churches that do provide volunteers and very actively provide volunteers to deliver the meal routes. But in terms of them providing the service themselves, that is not something that has occurred or been discussed.
Okay.
And I just want to repeat what Commissioner Sod said earlier. Those that have committed crimes are getting meals. And our students in our schools are getting meals. But we have seniors, senior adults in our community who are on a waiting list. That's the challenge.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Janet, just a question here, and I'm sorry if I missed this. But the numbers that we're seeing, is this, this is county-wide, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this is the entirety of our borders in the county?
Sir, say that again.
This is, yeah, this is everywhere.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Of our borders. Yes, sir. Sorry.
So we're not like pigeonholed into rural areas. This is everywhere.
No, sir.
Has there been any discussion with any kind of partnerships with the municipalities for this program?
So, not officially. However, after Andrew Friend's presentation to you all about the HCCBG funding, Indian Trail has expressed an interest to hear more about that in general. That obviously is not anything official, and no presentation has occurred. And the intent of that, I believe, was broader in nature. But that would be an opportunity that if you all wanted to engage in that, we would welcome the chance to make that happen and provide additional education for the municipalities.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at your map here, and I'm seeing a lot of flags there around the Weddington area, Stollings. There's some there in Waxall, even out in Marshville. So it looks like there's opportunity here to potentially partner with some of our municipalities. And I mean, I would be, personally, I would be open to exploring, you know, what we can do there with partnerships with those folks as well. And I don't know if that's something that, I don't know what the process would be there. But Brian, maybe you can weigh in on that. I mean, is that something that the staff can take on and maybe communicate with their staff?
Certainly. I think that's just a matter of the management team and I contacting the managers for those towns and their elected officials, if they don't have managers, and just having those discussions.
And, you know, the example that I look to with this is the partnership that we've got with Indian Trail with 74 Express. You know, that's a great partnership. And, you know, Indian Trail's been a fantastic partner with us. This helped reduce our cost and made the whole program more effective. So many hands make light work, right? So if we can get some partnerships here with some of our larger municipalities, you know, maybe we can, you know, with this program. Just my thoughts.
I don't know if with state, federal, and local, I don't know if this is an option or not. But we do have 53 schools across this county with commercial-grade kitchens in the schools. And I'm not exactly sure where extra food goes each day, if there's any food. And I know there's a lot of federal dollars and stuff that goes with child nutrition. But we do have 53 schools across the county, north, southeast, and west. We also have culinary academies in multiple high schools across Union County public schools, where they have commercial-grade kitchens, and they're cooking food and becoming culinary, getting their culinary certifications in Union County public schools. So I... So I, I don't, I would like to ask the manager, you know, if he could have a discussion with the superintendent and our CTE director to see if there's any, if this is an opportunity in some of these communities where we have schools to help with some of, some of these requests as well, if there's extra food. I don't know if there's extra food or if the cafeteria, and if it's even allowed because of the federal dollars for child nutrition. But I'd like to ask you to, you know, just inquire if, if that's a possibility because there's 53 commercial-grade, you know, kitchens in our county. And I don't know, it's usually a pretty great partnership when you get cute little kids and seniors. If there's some kind of partnership, we could work out there to, to get additional food to our seniors. I just think we need to take advantage of every resource we have, just like, you know, this county being able to, you know, come up with a medical examiner office when it looked like that was going to be near too impossible to get done. And two years later, you know, we're getting it done. So maybe, you know, there's a way to look at our really good resources that we already have in the county. We've got really, really good schools, Union County Public Schools, we've got really good charter schools, houses of faith, like you mentioned, Commissioner Valcom. I think we need to look at everything.
Well, if I may, just make a closing argument here and we'll, we'll get on with it. 586, and that's around Thanksgiving. And here we are, close to Christmas, so undoubtedly that number is higher. We heard from the county manager, we have the funds to get started. It is no doubt, and I certainly understand, we are not going to eliminate this waiting list overnight. But we can start with what we have if we appropriate 500,000 as a start from our fund balance. And we can start doing the final vetting and then deliver meals, as Ms. Payne said, within a matter of days. So let's say, maybe in the next month, we can only knock out 20, 25 of those. That's 20 to 25 more people that are getting fed a decent meal. Why wouldn't we do it? Why wouldn't we start? Are we going to wait six more months until the beginning of the fiscal year? And then, you know, look and see if we can put it in the budget? I, I ask my colleagues to vote yes, so we start tomorrow.
So I don't know if this is a fair request or not a fair request, but I do see our CFO here tonight. And personally, I would just like some feedback on the pros or cons of taking money out of our fund balance without having the proper planning or discussion to do that. I feel like the commissioners need to understand removing half a million dollars from our fund balance. Would you like to share with us if, if, if we're in a position to make this decision tonight?
Well, good afternoon.
You didn't, you didn't know you were going to be up here, did you?
No, no.
So sorry.
That's okay. So we have finalized, yes, we have finalized our audit. And yes, there is funding available if you so choose to appropriate fund balance for this. However, I would not be doing my job if I did not tell you that fund balance is for one-time use.
Okay.
And if you want to continue the funding in future years, fund balance is not there for that. And you would have to incorporate that into your ongoing operating budget year after year after year.
That's a very good point. Thank you for that reminder.
And I, I appreciate that, Beverly, and, and that was one of the points I wanted to make is that certainly if the board wanted to move forward, that is fine. I suspect that however many people we can serve, you're not going to tell them in July, we're not going to serve you anymore. So now, we have to come up with the funding to continue the program. As long as the board understands that, accepts that, that's fine. But I doubt we're going to tell people no after we've gotten them on the program.
Well, again, I can only speak for me, but I'm going for the whole enchilada in the next budget. So I don't consider this a one-time deal. I consider this a start.
So if my memory is correct, from the October presentation, and I did not bring my October folder with me, Mr. Sodz, Commissioner Sodz, but you, you can probably help me with this. The, on the needs slide from October, in order to meet the needs from, for the waitlist at that time, I believe it was $800,000 to accomplish this. And then there was another figure, $1 million to accomplish this. Do you remember what I'm referring to?
Yes, ma'am.
And can you speak to that?
At a high level, it was, I believe, $100,000. That was our initial current deficit for, for this year, close to $100,000. And as I mentioned earlier, we are not adding people back. So that has been reduced for this year. That would be what is in the column that is before you for the FY '26 current clients-only deficit number. And then the number that was presented was approximately $1 million. And that was based largely on just the food expenses. The additional weekend meals obviously were not included in that because that wasn't a component. And also, at that time, we had not included the additional cost for staffing that would need to be included for supporting those additional clients that we'd be serving in an ongoing way. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Merrill? Yes, ma'am.
I don't remember what that $800,000 was for.
It was for in-home services.
In-home services.
Yes, and that is provided by both Council on Aging and Union County Human Services through our DSS Adults Program.
So Mr. Sodz, going into the budget season in the next few months, knowing that they presented a $1.8 million needs request to us in October, do you still feel comfortable with the 500,000 tonight?
Well, I don't, maybe this helps to consider the 500,000 as seed money, okay? Because I don't have a number, we don't have a number in front of us, what it's going to take to finish out the fiscal year. But this gets us moving, okay? And we may need to, once we know what it's going to take to finish out the remainder of the fiscal year, we may be coming back to this again. But this gets us going. This, this gets the vetting process finalized and people getting meals.
Okay, can, can I make a, just putting this out there, okay? I fully agree with what Mr., Commissioner Sodz is saying. Yes, I do think that everyone deserves food, undoubtedly. Can we, how would everyone feel if we reduced our number somewhat to get the ball rolling? That way, we can contact UCPS, our churches, other municipalities to see what they can contribute so that everybody has a little skin in the game, if you will.
Did you have a number in mind? I mean, that, that half of me was his number, not mine.
You asked what was in the, available in the fund balance. So, but, I mean, even if we started out smaller, $100,000 to $200,000.
How about 250? Split it in half.
And allow staff to start reaching out to municipalities, to UCPS, to the UBA, the Union Baptist Association, other churches in our area to see if they can start contributing to seniors that are in their care church-wise to help alleviate the issue.
See if they'll pony up a little.
Yes. Can we start smaller?
Okay.
Again, I don't want to come to budget session and go, we can't come up with this extra $2 million with everything else coming down the pipe.
Okay, so.
So I would rather start out smaller and build our way up. And I, I understand completely what you're saying. Everybody deserves, you know, our 500-plus people deserve to have meals. Nobody is arguing that point at all. But I think we need to take a little bit smaller bite out of the numbers before we move on, before we do the whole plate.
If it's more amenable to my colleagues and yet still gets the ball rolling, I'll, I'll roll with it. Two, 200?
250.
250? 200.
I'm comfortable with 200.
I will amend my motion to ask for 200,000 from our fund balance to initiate working on our waiting list. How's that?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. So I, I think that we all need to come back to the realization, though, that, and Beverly, you know, mentioned this, that this is one-time money, okay? And it's a Band-Aid. That, that's effectively what it is. And listen, I, you know, I, there's not a single one of us up here that doesn't want to take care of our seniors. And so I really appreciate, you know, Commissioner Sodz's heart and his passion for this, and I, I really do. Because it is important that we take care of our seniors. But I, I think that we also have to understand that, you know, fund balance is, is typically used with capital. It's typically used with capital projects where, you know, there is a, a set cost there. It's not necessarily an operating-type expense. You know, so, so if we start down this road, you know, whether it's 500,000, whether it's 200,000, whether it's 10 bucks, there is going to be an expectation from the folks that we serve that we continue to fund this. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't, I'm not saying that we should. But what I'm saying is, we don't know what we don't know. And, you know, we are going into budget season. And so, you know, if you go down this road tonight, then you are effectively saying that, you know, hey, we're going to be funding you for the long-term. And we're going to be, you know, putting, putting this out there for the long-term. And so, you know, yes, you might get started tonight, but you're going to have that reoccurring cost every single budget cycle and it's going to, well, probably get larger. Now, look, I'm not saying that we shouldn't look for ways to, to service our senior folks with meals. I'm not saying that at all. But I do think that, you know, again, the municipal partners, I think that that could be a valid source of, of help with this. I think that you had a great idea, too, with our legislative agenda. Ultimately, I don't know that the county can take this on by ourselves. We need help. Yeah, we need help. And, and, you know, I, I agree. I think that this is a crisis. I want to, I want to do everything that I possibly can to help those folks. But we're going to need help and we're going to need help from a variety of sources. So that's going to be our state delegation, as well as municipal partners and, you know, anybody else who wants to volunteer in between.
I agree. And one thing that I was going to ask is, when you take that map that had all of the red flags all over it, is there a way to break that down so that, so that we can let Indian Trail, we have approximately this many requests waiting for you, Union View, we have this many requests, Stallings, Winget, Marshville? I would like it broken down so that when we're coordinating or communicating with our municipalities, they know what's going on in their community.
Absolutely.
And then, and then that'll help drill it down to this elementary school, this middle school, this high school, this church, this organization.
We can do that by zip code, so it will be close.
Okay, yeah.
If that's fair, without getting to the specific.
That's kind of hard because I have a Monroe zip code. I'm out in New Salem.
Right, right.
Wesley Chapel has a Monroe zip code.
Yes, so that's, yeah.
But we, we should be able to be, we will work with GIS to try to make that be as accurate as possible. And we should be able to make that happen very relatively easily.
I, I understand my colleagues' concerns with taking funds from the fund balance. But the alternative is not to do anything before the next budget year. Because you can ask your municipalities, but remember, they're in the same thing. They don't, their budget is already set unless they want to dip into their fund balance until next July. So that means we're kicking this down the road until next July. Okay? I understand your concerns about the fund balance, but the alternative is to do nothing.
Well, that definitely wasn't spoken to do nothing.
Well, if you're waiting, if you're not going to commit the fund balance, where are you going to get the money to start? Is there any other alternative?
Nothing that's quick. I mean, obviously, the only alternatives are working with other jurisdictions to help fund it. And that's not a quick process. That'll take time.
We'll call the question.
Do you have enough? Commissioner Christina Helms.
What I would like to see is staff go out, initiate the discussion so that we don't have to, and as Vice Chair Helm said, you know, fund balance money is mostly from capital. So I want to make sure that we are still protecting our budget by helping our seniors. But I think jumping the gun and doing it immediately is not going to benefit us. And, you know, we don't have a crystal ball to see what's coming down the road. I think tonight is a very great step, but I'd like to see what staff can do before we pull any triggers.
I would like to offer a friendly amendment to Commissioner Sodz's motion that when we take the vote for the $200,000 to be used from fund balance to get this started, I want to ensure that it is to address only those currently on the waitlist, the meals and the, the food expense, and that none of the money can be used towards like administration or, or like hiring or whatever. That the, the, the $200,000 is to address the waitlist and the food only.
Certainly. Can I ask a question? So with, with existing staff, there's, there's, again, there's a limit to how many people we can vet. If the board wants additional people vetted, we'd have to contract with those services. That is still considered administrative funds. If the board does not want us to contract, which is fine, just understand it's a slower process for us to vet. There's less people that we're going to get to be able to serve. It's a if or other. So I, I just want to understand, if it's no administration funds, that's perfectly fine. It's just going to take more time. And, and that's okay, as long as we know that.
Then I withdraw my friendly amendment.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
So I, I understand that, I get it, that this is a, this is a need. But there's also, what is the future of the cost that we're going to have to incur? And how do we pay for that? And, and I understand that Commissioner Sodz would like to see people get meals in their hands. First off, some of these expenses are because we're going to seven days. That's one of the increases for it. You're going from five to seven. I understand people need to eat seven days, but you are. but you are increasing the cost because it's going to seven days. The other part of it is, we do have to vet. You know, one of the things you can consider is maybe giving us authorization to start the vetting process, but not necessarily serving meals while we then also meet with municipalities, meet with UCPS, start to gather a plan for how can we fund this. I get it, folks aren't going to get meals, but we're getting them to the point where literally, as soon as a decision's made, they could start getting meals. That's just a suggestion. It will not get anyone any meals. All it does is start the vetting process so that we can at least have people ready to go. That's just something to think about.
Which is different than the motion that's on the floor?
That is correct.
Okay. Commissioner Walcom, did you have something you wanted to ask or share?
Maybe, maybe if I can... There's a lot going on up here. Oh, um, oh my goodness. So I, I understand the enthusiasm, and I, and I, I would love to feed the whole world tonight, you know? It is tough. And I understand the kind of Mr. Matthew's point. We don't want to set this precedent if we, if we start this and then all of a sudden it stops. There, there's an issue. I mean, if we give as a Christmas present, and this is one, you know, this is a one-time thing, I, I get it. To me, that's, that's totally different. But I'm really concerned about starting this and then stopping it. And, and I find you, you don't fix problems by throwing money at them. And we need to, we need, I, I'd love the idea of incorporating the, the different municipalities and start the vetting process and exploring what we can do. You know, I love that idea. I love the idea of trying to incorporate churches and, and hometown heroes and all these guys that do all this good work, and they, they love to do it. Try to incorporate all these folks, and let's do this as a community instead of just a county body. So that's, those are my thoughts. And, um, and, but I will say, I appreciate the enthusiasm, and he's, he's pushing us to really think about this thing, but those are, those are my thoughts.
I'm going to agree with the county manager. I think starting the vetting process is the right step. Um, let's start working with getting other people involved in this instead of us just jumping in feet-first into the deep end and not knowing. Well, yeah, really head-first. You're exactly right. So I would like to make a motion, or do we need to vote on that motion? The first motion first? Okay.
Okay. So, um, the motion for is to allocate $200,000 from fund balance to start addressing the waitlist and feeding people tomorrow. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, one for, um, Commissioner Christina Helms.
I would like to make a motion to instruct staff to work with municipalities, UCPS, and our local churches, once we get district needs, I guess is the correct terminology, for, um, for our citizens in need of food. I don't know where else I'm going to say this point.
So let me see if I understand this. We, we, you, you did the initial vetting.
Not the, not that.
They haven't?
No.
Well, how did they get on the waiting list? Wait, wait, wait a minute. How did these folks get? What vetting did they go through to get the 586 to get on the waiting list?
The initial seven-question screening.
Okay. And then there is, uh, when we...
There's a complete form that is required. Um, it's called the DAS 101 form. There's a short form and a long form, but there's a...
And it asks more questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So your motion is that we go to step two vetting with... Are you going to need money to do that?
Time.
Time.
And if, depending on how quickly you want us to vet, money for contract staff, if you want us to vet more quickly than we can vet with the staff that we have. But we can do some number, roughly 10 a week, probably with our current staff. Then obviously, if we start removing those and putting them actively on the program, they will then add to the number of recurring reviews that we have to complete as well. So that will increase those two-time-per-year reviews that have to occur.
But we're not feeding anybody.
But if, so, yes, sir, if we, if we just complete the initial full vetting.
We're vetting.
We could, we could do that, and then...
And have to do the form.
Yes.
And, and ask the other questions that have not been asked yet.
Right.
How does that expedite anything? If you're not putting any money for meals behind it, they're just...
They can't get any meals until they do this.
Right, but once they do it, they're not getting a meal.
But they would, at that point, be eligible for meals if additional funding was determined by you all that that is something that you wanted to invest.
No one can get meals until they call the 500 and what, 586 people back, which is going to take time, to ask the 586 people the other questions that haven't been asked yet and the form that has to be filled out.
And those actually have to be home visits for the first, for the, for those home...
But if you're not putting any money in for meals, that means you're waiting until July of 2025 before you actually start fund meals.
I'm not saying July. I mean, it could be...
Next budget. Well, you're saying you don't want to...
No, that's not what we're saying.
We're saying that the county manager is going to ask municipalities, "How much can you come out of pocket now, say, starting in January, to help feed people in your community?"
Okay, so are we allocating any money for contracting to expedite this vetting?
We will allocate money as soon as they come back to us and say, "We called 586 people..."
No, went to see.
They, they had to go in the homes and visit them.
And, and, um, and those 586 people have to complete the questions that haven't been asked yet, plus the form, plus a home visit.
So you're saying we're going to run through the whole 586? If I understand this correctly, we're going to, we're going to go through, start going through the second phase of vetting for all 586? And then when that's done, we'll figure out funding for meals? Um, I don't, I'm not sure I understand the end game here.
I want to clarify that we are not going to be able to go through all 586 with current... We will go through as many as we can.
Yes.
But it will not be 586. Right.
I mean, Commissioner Sides, the only way current people who are currently getting meals is because they followed the procedures. They, they answered the questions, they filled out the form, they had a home visit. Those things have to be done in order to get on the list to receive meals and to get on the route.
Which was part of my original motion to start that second vetting process, but once they've been vetted and approved, to get them a meal. I'm not sure what this motion is helping expedite, other than going through the list, but it's not feeding anybody.
It's getting pleasure to feed people.
No.
It's the next step.
Like, they'll be able to come back to us at the next meeting and tell us how many, how many they can get off the waitlist.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think what we've, what we've determined is, you know, approximately 10 a week, we can add to that. Obviously, you know, that's, that takes time. Uh, but we think we can add another 10 per week with current staffing. That's not contracting with anyone. Um, and during that timeframe, obviously, meeting with municipalities, other, um, you know, other partners to find out whether they're willing to fund anything, and then bring that back to the board at a future meeting and say, "This is how many we've been able to vet. This is what we found out as far as funding goes from other agencies. What is the board's pleasure at that point in time?"
What I would also like is for the staff to go ahead and start seeking um, what it will cost for that contract help to get this done. So I, I would say we want you to start, um, getting information or, you know, numbers and cost, um, and, and who that contractor will be, what will the, what will the cost be um, to take, you know, 20, 30, 40 people, 50 people off the waitlist in the meantime.
Okay, so that, if I understand this correctly, there's no money with this motion. It's just asking to go ahead and start the second phase of vetting with a, with a, uh, current staff, and knock out as many as you can, and then come back to us and say, in a month, there's, let's say there's 40. Are we going to appropriate from fund balance money to feed those 40? Just asking. But that, that motion's fine.
So in two weeks, so in two weeks, not only will we have that, but hopefully, we will have a price from a contract vendor that maybe, that will be able to, if we're able to do 10, to add 10 per week with current staff, how many more can we do with a vendor?
Commissioner Merrill, may I just add one point to that? So I think in terms of coming back with the cost for the contract staff and, and estimated number that we could complete per month with the contract staff member, we can certainly, uh, obtain that cost in light of the fact that we have Christmas and New Year's, and we do have to actually schedule the home visits. Not talking about our staff, but the clients that are on the waiting list. We have to, they obviously have to welcome us into their home as well. Uh, so there may be a delay in that timeframe, and it might be more prudent to come back maybe at the second meeting in January for that component. Um, if, well, to provide meaningful...
Yeah, let's get started. And I do agree, you'll have more information at the second January meeting. But, you know, get started right, right away. And, um, and then we'll have more, you know, information at the second meeting. I agree with that timeline.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, Jen, I just got a real, hopefully, just a real quick question, okay? And...
I have all the time in the world, sir. I'm here for you.
Okay, Dennis Joyner's not here tonight, so you're it.
Dennis, if you're watching, buddy.
So my, my, my question is, is, I mean, obviously, we, we've discussed a lot of things, um, on this topic. And, and I just want to make, I just want to make sure, when we go to the second stage of vetting, like what's being discussed, at that point, is there an expectation from the folks being vetted that they will start receiving meals? Because, because it, this is...
We would need to very clearly communicate what is occurring.
And see, that, that's my concern, is that, you know, if we press forward with that second stage of vetting, are we creating an expectation, you know, there that we may or may not be able to fund? And, and so, you know, I think that we should be careful with this because, you know, if you put it out there and you say, "Hey, we're going to go ahead and proceed with, um, with the next step in vetting, and they are already familiar with this process," then they're going to be saying to us, and obviously to your department, "Hello, hey, you know, I, I proceeded to this next step. You know, when can I start expecting this service?" And so I think that we need to manage our expectations with this um, so that we don't, um, get out over our skis, you know, before the board's had enough time to sit here and say, "Okay, well, this is how much it's going to cost us." Um, so just, just my question and my point.
If there is a motion taken and direction provided for us to take any action, we will make sure that we are very clear in our messaging, and we'll need direction from you all in regard to what that might look like, I think. And I think you've been pretty clear on that.
And a point of clarification, too. I think I heard earlier, if I'm not mistaken, that once a, a client has completed the questions, filled out the form, had the home visit, I think you said meals could, could begin within a few days?
Technically.
Two to three days? So, you know, once we follow the procedure...
Let's say a week for good measure, but a few days is...
Yes. You know, one, once all these boxes have been checked, meals can start going to those people. And it sounds like we do have funds to get started. Although it's one-time funds, but that's why we're not going all in. We're being cautious with a smaller number than a bigger number.
No, that failed.
That failed.
That failed. There's no money.
Yeah, the 200.
Yes.
But, but what I'm saying is, is we have funds when this number comes back to work with. But we...
It's available.
It's available if we choose to do that.
May I make one other point? And I apologize that I'm not certain on this, but, um, the title of the form is actually a registration form, the DAS 101 form. I would like to have the chance, uh, if you all take action tonight or not, either way, to just verify that the information I just provided is correct, meaning that we can go ahead and complete the form and not put them on the program actively. Um, because I do not want to misspeak to that. So if a motion is made, if that could be included as part of that motion, that would be very helpful in case there is a restriction that would preclude us from being able to complete that and not actively put them on if they are then qualified.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I can just comment, um, again, very briefly. So I, I am, I am perfectly fine with reaching out to municipal partners and, and, you know, contacting our state folks, doing everything that we possibly can to try to gain some support within our borders for this program. Um, I, I think that we should just be careful with this vetting process because, again, to your point, I think that you're creating an expectation that it's going to require board action for us to service that may or may not pass. So...
So would you prefer us wait, let staff go to municipalities, UCPS, churches, um, UBEAs, um, uh, even the diocese for Catholic Church, to go to them first before we move forward with the vetting process for these citizens?
Through the chair. Um, yes, I think that that would be the, the thing to do, is to, you know, again, see what kind of support we can get from, um, from our...
For funding.
Our municipalities. Um, any other partners that we can, that we can reach out to, um, and then see what we're working with. And then at that point, you know, we can proceed with additional vetting. Because, again, I don't want to create an expectation.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, $100,000, $200,000, $300,000 of fund balance. And then that now becomes recurring cost. And it's going to be something that's going to have to be budgeted. And so, listen, I'm not saying that we don't, that we don't do something here. But what I am saying is, is let's take this one step at a time.
Yeah. So, um, would that mean you withdrawing your motion? Would that, she would...
I can...
Withdraw her motion?
Or modify.
I will modify it, that we wait for staff to visit citizens to complete the vetting process until after staff comes back to us with hopefully commitments from municipalities, UCPS, and area churches.
Through the chair. If, if I may, um, I, I think that, and I think this is where you're, where you're going, but just to, just to clarify. Um, I, I think that what we're asking staff to do is to direct staff, you know, to reach out to municipal partners and other potential partners in the area for, um, well, see who might be...
Partnership.
Yeah, see who might be interested in funding this program.
We, we just have to come up with new creative ways to get this funded, and I think this is a really good start.
Okay. That's the motion on the floor.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Yes. Commissioner Helms.
Okay, okay. So we are going to direct staff to reach out to municipalities, UCPS, churches, and under other funding sources to see what they can contribute. So once we get that information back, staff is going to start the vetting process after we get that information back.
But is that what...
Can I ask one question of the staff?
I mean, is this something feasible? Is this something that y'all can do?
They can ask.
Ask for money?
They can ask. The worst they can say is no. Does that clarify? Does that clarify? Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye? All those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes four to one. Okay, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is item 24-858, consideration of acceptance of an offer to purchase county-owned property. I want to recognize County Manager Brian Matthews concerning this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the reverter interest that the county owns with the Old Shiloh School on Monroe Road. We did receive an offer to purchase from Union Academy, which currently uses that facility. And in fact, they have some ownership rights to that property. The county went through a upset bid process. We did not receive any upset bids. At the current stage, we need a decision from the board. Do you wish to accept that offer? Do you wish to reject that offer? Do you wish to allow for additional offers? And so it needs some direction from board, from the board on how to proceed with the offer that's currently on the table.
Make a motion, Madam Chair, make a motion to reject the offer.
Any questions, comments?
Can I ask for clarification? Would that rejection mean also in that you would not entertain an additional offer on that unless, of course, it were for the actual cost of the land and the building?
That is correct. That is included in my motion.
And I will go a step further that it is not for sale. We are not, this, this property is not for sale. Okay, any comments, questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Pass this five oh. Okay. I would like to take a 10-minute recess. Real quick, we will be, let's see, what time is it right now? What time do we wanna come back?
Quarter to.
Yeah, we'll be back at 9:45. Recession. Okay, the board is back from a 10-minute recess. The next item of business is item 24-868, contract amendment for MRL Consulting LLC. As Commissioner Brian Hams requested that this item be placed on the business agenda, I will recognize, first, I'll recognize Commissioner Brian Hams and management staff, the county manager, to take it from here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanna, first of all, say this, that, you know, I asked for this item to be on business because I believe that this is a decision that may generate more discussion. Hopefully not as much discussion as the last item. But, but first of all, I wanna say this. I wanna, I wanna thank Michelle Lancaster for all of her service to the county. I wanna thank her for her service as she was our deputy county manager there for a while. I wanna thank her for the service that she's provided the county for consulting work that she's been doing over the last couple of years. However, I also look at this and I liken the consulting contract that we're looking at with this item as very much, you know, what would happen in the private sector. And, you know, it's been my experience in the private sector that we have consultants for short-term things that don't last years at a time. And, and so I wanna make this clear that, you know, again, I'm not, I think we should all be thankful for Michelle's service, you know, with what she's done. But as I sit here, I look at our, at our county management staff, and we have a county manager, we have a deputy county manager, we have an assistant county manager, we have strategy and innovation directors, we have our economic, our newly formed Economic Development Department, we have facilities folks. So we have resources. And I firmly believe that we have the resources that we need in-house to proceed with these projects. And so I say that to say this, that I would like to make a motion that we deny the amendment with MRL Consulting and that we allow for the current contract to expire at the end of term. Thank you.
Commissioner Hams, as always, I appreciate and value the perspective you bring from corporate America. I too have a long resume in corporate America. But having served Union County for 10-plus years, I do have to unfortunately disagree with your motion on this. Michelle Lancaster has been a very valuable liaison to this board. The opioid crisis is a national problem, a world problem. Hopefully that will be addressed in the next presidential administration with the border and what's coming in. But until then, we have an opioid crisis. And Union County has been identified as a very high concentration of opioid deaths and near deaths. And I think we're fortunate to have a resource in local and state government. Michelle Lancaster has spent her adult career in building liaisons and contacts and relationships with people across North Carolina that has benefited Union County. For example, being able to open a medical examiner's office when Mecklenburg. For example, being able to open a medical examiner's office when Mecklenburg dropped us. And so, for those reasons and her expertise, and I do agree, consultants are not meant to be carried over, you know, like a full-time employee, but we have, you know, our legislative agenda, she has those relationships, we have the medical examiner, the medical examiner thing that's getting ready to launch just for Union County, and hopefully we'll be able to add on a handful of other counties in the coming year, and we'll need her expertise. So, I will not be able to support your motion to terminate her contract.
Yes, Commissioner.
If I understand correctly, if I'm wrong, Mr. Matthews, this proposes to narrow her focus just to the regional autopsy center, correct?
Yes, sir. So, and, you know, Michelle has taken on a number of projects over the last couple of years.
Right.
So, she will be coming off of the opioid project, she will be coming off of the legislative project where she was liaison, and her focus will be only that of the medical examiner's office.
Okay. My concern is, as we heard tonight, it's going to be at least three years before the autopsy center is fully operational and implemented, and I liken that project to the barn, where we're going to have an executive director who's going to be, I don't think you really market an autopsy center, but you'll have relationships with the counties and coordinating with all the various interests. So, I think it is essential of, as this project gets off the ground, that we have a staff employee or a staff person that is responsible, not just for the next year, but ongoing forward to ensure the success of this.
Yeah, I completely agree with you, and in part of Michelle's presentation, she indicated that you will be getting, in the course of the next year, few months or so, a request to actually add a position that will become essentially the manager, the person overseeing how this project runs, operates. You can't run a medical examiner's office or autopsy's office with just a pathologist, you have to have other staff there. And so, we are going to have to ramp that up, hire staff, and Michelle's role will decrease. She anticipates that it will take probably not a full year to get to the point where she is no longer involved in this, but she does have expertise, she does have contacts with the state, and that's why staff has recommended that we consider her role to continue. We certainly understand the board may choose not to.
Brian, if I could just interject.
Yeah, go ahead.
We actually anticipated this happening, and so, as part of the budget for FY25, a position was already approved, a business manager position to essentially take on the duties that Michelle had been doing and moving those two. So, there's already a position approved in the budget that would be funded with the medical examiner's office funding. Michelle's contract, if approved, would also be funded with funding from the state grant, because that's the anticipated transition that we thought would occur. So, that position is already available in the budget. We haven't actually gone out and recruited for that position because it's been, as Michelle said, it's been a little bit slow to get some things going, and so, we haven't had to expend those funds yet.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have multiple questions, but I'll take them one at a time. Who does Michelle report to?
Go ahead.
Technically, she reports to the county manager, her contract is with the county manager's office.
Okay. How often does she report to you?
It depends on the circumstances, at least once a month, sometimes more often.
Okay. So, how are we keeping, how is the board being informed how, what she is doing for the county? Because I understand that, from my understanding, she has multiple contracts.
Multiple items within her contract? Just one contract?
I was under the impression she had contracts with other entities.
Other entities.
Okay. So, how is that information reported to the board so we are understanding what we're getting for what we're paying?
So, essentially, Michelle does these updates periodically to the board. That is the only way that she's been communicating, other than to me or to Patrick if I'm not around and there's something going on, that information doesn't necessarily, or hasn't been communicated directly to the board, it's only been in these specific times.
Okay. So, my understanding is she also contracts with Wingate University, is that correct?
At this point in time, she's actually a full-time employee with Wingate University.
Okay. So, she's a full-time employee with them, she contracts with us, how many hours does she work a week, a month for Union County?
So, it varies. So, I would say on a monthly basis, if you add it all up, she's probably working somewhere in the 30-hour range.
So, she's working 70 hours a week between Wingate and us?
It depends, yes, ma'am. It does, it depends.
Okay. With issue with the barn, since Wingate is kind of in partnership with us, who is she representing in that position? Is she representing Wingate in their vision for the barn out in that area, or is she looking out for UCP, for Union County, sorry?
She's not.
Overall?
She's not, like, working actually on the barn project. Now, she may be working on behalf of Wingate University for the barn project, she's not working for us on the barn project.
Okay.
She's working on opioid liaison and medical examiner's office.
Okay. But we also have a lobbyist that works for Union County, and Michelle also does the same thing as a lobbyist does, correct? So, we're basically double-funding one position.
So, a lobbyist, a lobbyist actually is at Raleigh, they're the ones who are actually hearing the bills that are getting introduced. Michelle is not in Raleigh, she is not getting the, you know, hearing the bills that are introduced, dealing with those people directly. I would say her role is a little bit different. I understand where you're going, it is a little bit different, but it's, but she does manage our lobbyist, she manages that position.
And I will say that is one of the items that's going away January 1, that is transitioning to me. So, what Michelle did is she would communicate with the lobbyist about what's happening, and then she would bring that back to us, and then we would bring that to you all. Obviously, this last six months has been a little bit unique in Raleigh with the short session, but that is communicate with the lobbyist in Raleigh and bring that information back to you, it won't be Michelle anymore.
So, to explain that a little bit further, so, she was going to stay on temporarily to see the medical examiner's office through and help with the transition of opening that medical examiner's office and bringing on, you know, the examiner. But she was transitioning away from our legislative agenda and the opioid funds that is now going to be going to them.
In-house, yeah.
In-house, right.
And I will say about the length of the contract, I think none of us anticipated how difficult it would be to get through the bureaucracy in Raleigh with some of these contracts and some of these agreements. It's taken a very long time and a lot of back and forth between state staff because they don't necessarily, this wasn't their idea, this was a legislative priority to come to Union County. So, there's been a lot of meetings, and I think Clayton, myself, and Brian, we've all talked to Michelle, probably on a weekly basis. There are formal updates that she comes and gives, but we're in constant communication with Michelle, and every time she is meeting with somebody, and a lot of the time, she has to have the same meeting three times before she gets anywhere, whether we're getting that information. It's possible we haven't communicated that back to you all as well as we should, but she does communicate with us pretty consistently.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, just to kind of touch on what Commissioner Christina Helms was getting at, I think that there's a question of accountability, and, you know, maybe, maybe we're not getting that, you know, from staff. But, you know, I think that when you look at it, you know, consulting is very different than, say, a full-time employee. And so, there's not going to be, you're not punching a clock, all right? So, the only thing that we have to go on is what she's telling us and what staff is, you know, communicating. And, you know, going back to, well, she communicates with lobbyists, and then she goes back to staff, and, well, why can't we communicate with lobbyists? And so, again, maybe I'm looking at it very, very simplistically, but I think that long-term consulting contracts are problematic for the county. And so, you know, I'll stand by my motion.
I would like to ask staff, if this motion were to pass, who do we have that would be able to step in to take over overseeing this medical examiner's office and our new medical examiner to begin doing autopsies this week?
I mean, obviously, it'll be one of us on the management team, we'll just have to get up to speed, we'll have to, you know, learn more about how an autopsy center operates, and that'll be one of our, one of the three of us who'll take that role on.
Okay. So, a point of clarification, Michelle has never opened a medical examiner's office before.
She did this.
That's correct, she oversaw that process in Mecklenburg County, but they didn't open one, they had it.
She just oversaw.
That's correct.
Their functionality.
The medical examiner's office reported to her.
So, she was on the tail end of it, the daily operations sort of thing, correct? So, this has been a new game for her as well. I mean, she had background info that helped, but we're beyond that point now, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, what, in regards to the health department, how can they jump in and assist if this motion passes? Can they?
I don't know that that's a role that they would play in this, to be honest with you. That's not a health department function. Again, if the board is not interested in the contract, we'll figure it out, we'll have to figure it out, but I can't say that the health department is the right place for that to be.
Okay.
Did I, oh, I'm sorry. Can I just go ahead?
And if we do not secure Michelle's expertise with 30-plus years' experience in this, we're going to have to post the position sooner rather than later, to Clayton's point, to if we're not going to have Michelle, we're going to have to hire someone, plus benefits and salary, and rate them on more to do what she's doing individually.
We would seek to post the position immediately, essentially.
Regardless of how the decision, we are going to use the funding that the state has set aside for the autopsy center for this position, and we intended on using that for Michelle's contract as well, if the board approves. If you don't, regardless, we're going to use the funding from the state dollars that we receive for this.
Well, I, just me, if the plan was to have, to get an executive director, and I'm not sure if that's the right terminology for the position, in place at some point, then I would think if this motion passes, we could expedite that process. To your point, start posting.
Yeah, we would have to, and I think our concern with two weeks left in the year is what gets lost in that transition. I understand the concern with long-term consulting contracts, how involved Michelle has been on this on a daily basis, I would ask, from a staff standpoint, if you're not comfortable with the year, at least a period of time to where we can transition, because right now, a contract ends at the end of this calendar year, and we are capable, we would figure it out, but we are just on the doorstep of starting autopsies, and we would not want something to go wrong initially. So, we, personally, I would ask for a little bit of transition time, if the board is open to that, that they don't want to support a full year.
What kind of timeframe did you have in mind?
I would ask for six months. I mean, we might not need that whole time, we would immediately post the position, it does take time to hire positions around here, it's usually a three-month turnaround, so it's just, it's not quick, it's holidays right now, so we probably wouldn't get it posted until the first of the year. So, I would, I would think at the, at a minimum of six months would give us the comfort level to say we can get someone in, get them up to speed, and let Michelle transition that knowledge to that person.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm not willing to amend the motion to six months, I'm willing to amend the motion till the very last day of February 2025.
Two months.
Two months. So, I will amend my motion so that we continue with the contract as amended till the final day of February 2025. At that point, the, the contract for consulting services with, with Michelle would end at the final day of February 2025.
I don't think anyone is not appreciating the things that Michelle has done. I think the biggest concern is the length of the contract. She has great resources, I'm not taking that away from her. My concern is, the biggest thing that I have heard is, we hear from her at the legislative breakfast and renewal of contract. I don't know what she's doing for us, what am I spending my money on? What are we spending our taxpayers' money on? We have to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and I don't see it. I'm sure she's doing a great job, I don't see it. That is my major problem. Again, I've asked other board members, I've asked staff, who does she report to? When does she show up? Are we getting our bang for our buck, is what this comes down to? Again, nobody's diminishing what she has done in the past and what she's currently doing. My concern is the length of the contract and her reporting to staff who reports to us.
And I think there's been a breakdown maybe in communication because she, she is working with staff often, I mean, monthly, if not weekly or bi-weekly.
Again.
And, and honestly, it's the chair and the vice chair who sets the agenda and asks her to come do a presentation and an update, so perhaps the fault lies in the chair and the vice chair for not putting her on the agenda more often.
And personally, I would be okay to extend the contract three or six months, for me personally, but for another year, no. I would like to see it shorter term, because, again, I understand we're in the government business right now, however, we need to get out of the mind of government business and start working, being financially responsible to the taxpayers, and doing long-term contracts is not it.
Well, I absolutely agree with what you're saying, I really do, but what we have been doing for the last two years in Michelle working with our state legislators and staff and this board for the last two years, to be able to open a medical examiner's office in Union County is, I mean, this has been a monumental thing.
Yeah, nobody's taking that away from her.
Well, yes, we are, yes, we are. We're taking that away from her because we didn't ask for a quarterly update or, you know, more updates, when it took a lot of work to be able to do our first autopsy in 2024. We're going to do our first autopsy this week, and that family will not be on a backlog in Raleigh waiting to get their family member laid to rest. And so, that is the only disagreement I have. And so that is the only disagreement I have. Yes, we have to be fiscally responsible, but we also have to be responsible to the taxpayers of Union County that has, that have lost a loved one and don't know why. And so, and, and, and I will tell you right, right now, we would not have a medical examiner's office or a licensed medical examiner. None of this would, would have been possible if Michelle Lancaster had not been working tirelessly every week for that autopsy to happen tomorrow. And there are other counties that also got dropped by Mecklenburg County that if, when Union County gets this up and running, we'll be able to start doing Anson County, Cabarrus County, and I wo, I work in the 8th Congressional District. I, I work with eight other, you know, eight other sheriff offices, and they are so, they cannot believe that Union County did this, because their people are waiting on autopsies also, because they got dropped by Mecklenburg, and they're waiting to lay their loved ones to rest too. So I just wanna say, bravo, bravo, Union County, for doing what even our state legislator said couldn't be done, and Michelle Lancaster got it done. And I don't know how we're gonna do this without her. I'll just say that. I don't know where we go at the end of this contract. I don't know what we're gonna do with these families who need an autopsy, and, and now the person who got this done for our county is not gonna be around to see it, you know, to see it through for the next three months, six months, 12 months. I, I think we're, I think we're in trouble.
Commissioner, Mr. Helms, would you accept a friendly amendment to, uh, instead extend the contract for six months for a smooth transition to an executive director as a full-time employee? Would you accept that amendment to your motion?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Sides, I, I think that the, the point here is, is that we, we started discussing this, you know, over a year ago, and, um, and a, a year ago, you know, we were trying to set the, the pathway, you know, so that, um, so that we could, you know, move on from this contract. And, and so I'm, I'm anxious for the county to start taking on this responsibility. And so I understand where you're going. I, I really do, and, and I, and I understand the, um, the, 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 the thought process there that, okay, well, we're gonna need some time. But I can tell you, I mean, and, Mr. Deputy County Manager, you correct me if I'm wrong, but are you not, you know, kind of in the know on, on these projects as well? All right, if, if, if Michelle's been communicating with our county staff, then I'm assuming that, you know, you guys are somewhat up to speed here.
I'd say it's accurate, we're up to speed, but she has the relationship. She's been in all the meetings. She knows the doctor, she knows the atrium contacts, so it, yes, we, we know what's happening, but it would take some time to transition those relationships, transition those contracts, so where we will feel comfortable. We will do whatever the board wants, and if, if this is what the board decides, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out. It's just we don't want the, the department to suffer, because there's a transition. Um, so I think that's our concern at this point, that we don't wanna rush this thing as a transition from what Michelle's been doing to what we will be doing, and we know we will be doing and miss something in, in the meantime.
And, and I think that that's a valid concern, but I think we've also heard from our county manager, we just heard that again from our deputy county manager, that, you know, the county will, will proceed, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna make this thing work. And so, you know, it, I believe it would be a luxury at this point, you know, to give it six months. Um, I still prefer the, uh, the end of February. You know, I, I think that, you know, we have to make, um, a, a firm decision, and, um, and, listen, you know, the county's gonna go on. The, the county's gonna go on without any, you know, there's any one of us. The county will proceed. So, um, so I, I would prefer to stay with my original motion.
So if I understood correctly, we are gonna be undertaking autopsies for Union County effective tomorrow? Correct? Okay. There'll be, as needed, of course, but we have everything in place to assume that responsibility. It's, and then what, I, I can't remember what she said. Anson County's next? Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on the board. There are no other comments. All those in favor of Mr. Bron Helms's, um, motion, please say aye. All those opposed? So, um, the motion fails. Um, I would like to make a motion, um, to, um, let's see, let me turn it in my place here. I would like to make a motion to approve the extension of the agreement for 11 months for the additional contract terms, saying that the county would be, um, MRL Consulting's primary client, that any additional clients be disclosed and approved by the county, and that any future contract renewal or extension or terms, term options be approved by the Board of County, uh, County Commissioners, with the county manager authorized to terminate the agreement if deemed in the best interest of the county. If there are no comments or, um, questions per the motion, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed?
I would like to make a motion, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the extension of the agreement for six months of the contract for MRL Consulting as their primary client, with any additional clients being disclosed and approved by the county, and that any future contract renewal or extensions of the term options be approved by the board, with the county manager authorized to terminate the agreement if deemed in the best interest of the county.
So your motion is for six months. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed? So, so the motion here is three to two. Can you just make this note here, guys? Bear with me. Okay. Next on the agenda is item 24-851, Appointment of Commissioners to Boards and Committees.
Yeah, we have an addition.
We, we had two matters. We had the EDC matter and then the, uh, the S382 resolution.
No. Okay, so, um, we had two amendments to the agenda. Um, I am going to direct this, uh, the next one, the dissolution of the Monroe City Union County Economic Development, um, Committee. I'll, um, hand this over to Commissioner Gary Sides.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I make a motion that the board authorize the county attorney to send a letter to the city of Monroe regarding the following actions. The board agrees with the city of Monroe to move forward with the dissolution of the Monroe Union County Economic Development Commission as soon as reasonably possible. Two, the board agrees with the city that the county and the city should jointly work on a plan for a dissolution of the EDC. Three, the board agrees the following should be included in the plan of dissolution for the EDC, that the county and the city of Monroe have mutual access to EDC records pursuant to applicable law, and that the county and city work together to itemize a list of assets for distribution to the parties as city, uh, county-owned, city-owned, or EDC-owned in accordance with the inter-local agreement, and the board calls for a meeting of the EDC Board of Directors to be held in the near future for the limited purpose of authorizing a person to pay necessary current and valid invoices and obligations of the EDC, authorizing a person to oversee the dissemination of EDC records to Union County and the city of Monroe pursuant to applicable law, and authorizing an inventory of assets and property to be ultimately distributed to Union County and the city of Monroe pursuant to the inter-local agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner Sides. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, follow. Okay, the next, um, one we had was, uh, the resolution. Um, I'm gonna toss it over to Commissioner Bron Helms regarding the support of repeal or amendment of Section 3K point one of session law 2024-57.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so the, the resolution is, um, you know, appearing on the screen here, and, and I think that everyone here is familiar with Senate Bill, uh, 382, and, and what this, this resolution does is it obviously, um, expresses the county's support for repealing that final section. So that would be Section 3K dot one of session law 2024-57. And what that does, that pertains to, um, to downzoning, and, and what this bill has done is it's prohibited, um, in a lot of ways, prohibited downzoning by counties unless, you know, they receive, um, certain express written, uh, uh, permission, you know, from property owners. Um, just in my opinion, I, I believe that this is, um, this is governmental overreach. And, uh, and so with that in mind, I, I'll, I'll make the motion that the board adopt the resolution in support of repeal or amendment of Section 3K dot one of session law 2024-57.
Okay. Any discussion, comments, questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, thank you. That passes, follow. Okay, um, next on the agenda is item 24-851, Appointment of Commissioners to Boards and Committees. The positions available to be filled by commissioners are listed in an attachment to this agenda item, and each commissioner has been provided a hard copy of the list of available positions. We will go through the list of boards and committees one by one, and will vote on appointments to each board and committee. Where there is a current commissioner appointed to the board or committee, this appointment can remain the same, or the board may select different commissioners for the appointment. So let's begin, uh, top of the list, the first one is the Agriculture Advisory Board.
Um, I'd like to appoint Clancy Balkum.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next one is the Catawba River Water Supply Project Governing Board. Um, I do not think we currently have anyone on that one.
We do.
Okay, it's blank.
Yeah, um, so, so I currently serve on there, Commissioner, well, um, former Commissioner David Williams was serving on there as well.
Okay.
So there are two openings on this board. Um, I would prefer to stay on this board if, if the board sees fit, so we need to appoint one other individual.
Is there, are there, is there another commissioner interested in serving with, uh, Bron Helms on the Catawba River Water Supply Project? Yes. Awesome. Okay, all those in favor of Bron Helms and Clancy Balkum serving on the Catawba River Water Supply Project Governing Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Centralina Council of Government, we currently have, um, Bron Helms. Um, how many positions do we have on that one? One? Just one posi, just one seat?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Would you like to continue serving in that capacity?
Um, I, I would be open for another commissioner to, to take that on. Um, what, what I find is that there's some difficulty there, uh, with CRTPO in Centralina, so I think the county would be better served if we can have another volunteer from the board.
So the floor is open. Okay, um, I will take that one. Um, all those in favor of Melissa Merrill, serving on the Centralina Council of Governments, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, Centralina Economic Development Commission.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I, I'm wondering if we have to appoint someone for this committee.
I have the same concern.
Because I, I think that it's included with Centralina Council of Governments, um, but I'll defer to staff for clarification.
I'm sorry, I was asking one question. I don't even.
Honestly know what that is, um.
Can we come back to it?
Yeah, we'll ta, we'll table that committee, especially given our current economic development situation. We'll table that one, um, Madam Clerk, if you don't mind making note of that. The Economic Development Board of Advisors, I think that's kinda tabled right now.
As default at this point.
We will table that. The Monroe, okay, the next one table for the Monroe Union County Economic Development Commission, we just, um, made a motion to dissolve that and work with Monroe City. Next committee is the Fire Commission.
Miss Chairman, Madam Chairman. Um, that, um, commission has not met in quite some time, and, and I, I think it would, it would be better if we worked towards just dissolving that altogether.
And we're talking about the Fire Commission.
The Fire Commission. So I would recommend you not appoint anyone to that, and then we work to dissolve that.
Okeydoke. Sounds good to me. The next one is Human Services Board.
I'll take that one.
I'm sorry, was that Mr. Sides? Okay, all those in favor of, uh, Commissioner Sides serving on the Human Services Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Okay, Job Ready Partnership Council. And I would just ask the county manager if you have any input on these. Um, it appears that we currently don't have anyone.
We did have someone, I believe.
Okay, so it is open.
It is open.
It is open. Is anyone interested in the Job Ready Partnership Council?
And I believe that one meets around lunchtime.
Oh, I'm in.
Seriously?
Should, should we put food or not beside all the categories?
Okay. All those in favor of Commissioner Gary Sides serving on the Job Ready Partnership Council, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
That one's open also. It meets on Wednesday mornings around eight o'clock.
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, Ms. Lynn, how often does that, um, how?
It's like monthly.
Monthly. Okay.
I believe who was on that before?
So, Madam Chair, I, I have some interest in serving there, but, um, but if they're meeting monthly, I can't guarantee that I can be there, so.
Do you want an alternate? You wanna do it and then have an alternate? In case you can't make it.
Is that, um, uh, Ms. Lynn, is that possible that we can assign an alternate to that as well, or is that, is that one of those boards that's only?
I think it's only for the member. I will say that they struggle for a quorum, so even if you weren't able to make every month, making.
They struggle to.
A handful, um, is better than nothing, so whoever can show up however often you can is better than not having anyone on there.
Okay.
Any takers?
I mean, I, well, Gary, if you think that she can make it, then.
I, I can make it.
Go ahead.
Okay, Gary Sides, all those in favor of Commissioner Gary Sides, serving on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Library Board of Trustees.
I'll do that one.
All those in favor of Commissioner Christina Helms, serving on the Library Board of Trustees, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Local Emergency Planning Committee has a vacancy.
They meet at lunch as well, don't they?
They do offer a meal. They meet quarterly.
Quarterly.
I'll, Madam Chair, if there's no interest, I, I'll get some interest there. I'll, I'll take that.
Okay. All those in favor of Commissioner Brian Helms, serving on the Local Emergency Planning Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization. Currently Commissioner Brian Helms serves. It looks like we would also need an alternate.
I'll volunteer as an alternate.
Madam Chair, I, I would prefer to remain on that committee.
Okay, very good. All those in favor of Brian Helms continuing his service on the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization with Commissioner Gary Sides as the alternate, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I am currently on that one.
I'll do that one.
Um, all those in favor of Commissioner Christina Helms, serving on Parks and Rec Advisory Board, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The Rocky River Rural Planning Organization Transportation Advisory Committee. I currently sit on, on that one, and I believe J R was the alternate. Is anyone interested in being the alternate? They tend to meet in Stanley County, if anyone, and they usually have dinner.
Madam Chair, how?
If food is the.
How often do they meet?
It's, it's not that, I mean, what would you say, Madam Clerk? How often do they technically, are they supposed to meet? It?
Looks like quarter, or, uh, three months?
Quarterly.
Yeah, typically it's about every three months.
And they, and they do, will be meeting here in September.
Okay, in September. Nice. Anyone interested in being the alternate? Clancy Balkum? Okay. All those in favor of Melissa Merrill continuing to serve on the Rocky River Rural Planning Organization Transportation Advisory Committee with Clancy Balkum as the alternate, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, South Piedmont Community College. We reappointed Jerry Simpson on June 3rd, 2024. His term will expire in 2028, does not require a new appointment. So we're good on S P C C. Um, school liaison will be the chair and the vice chair. So that will be Melissa Merrill and Commissioner Brian Helms. Do we need to vote on that since it's automatically the chair and the vice chair? No? Okay. Huh?
We, we've had some questions on that in the past. I think it's probably wise to go ahead and vote.
Okay. I will speak up and say that up until about four years ago, it was, it's not traditionally the chair and the vice chair automatically. So all those in favor of Melissa Merrill and Brian Helms, serving this term as the school liaison, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Transportation Advisory, no appointment made in 2023. Does anyone have an interest in serving on the Transportation Advisory Board, the transit system?
This is the local transit system.
Local transit. And how often do they meet?
I, I believe it's quarterly.
Quarterly.
What exactly are the responsibilities? Our own transportation department, that this is the, this is the group that is for.
Um, I have an interest in that. I, I will put my name in the hat for that one. All those in favor of Melissa Merrill, serving on the local transit system transportation advisory board, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the Yadkin River Water Supply Project Advisory Board, we need two commissioners. Are there two commissioners? I'm, my name was on that. Are there two commissioners that are interested in the Yadkin River Water Supply Project Advisory Board?
Madam Chair, so we, so we need two appointments there? So, okay, so this would be the, essentially the, the same type of advisory board that we've got with the Catawba.
Do they meet in the evenings? Says during the day.
I think they meet during the day.
I'll, I'll volunteer for one of the positions. Are, are you going to continue on yourself?
I'll continue on with you. Okay, all those in favor of Commissioner Gary Sides and Commissioner Melissa Merrill, serving on the Yadkin River Water Supply Project Advisory Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the last one is Partners Board of Directors. No appointment needed. So we're complete. And the only thing that I would ask is, is if Madam Clerk, when you receive invitations, if you would put these into our calendars and just make us aware and remind us where we need to be and what they're serving that day. Thank you very much. And thank you for always helping to keep us organized.
And it will be posted on our red side as well. Okay, so that takes care of that. I will now go to the county manager for comments.
I have no comments.
Okay. I will start with Commissioner Gary Sides. We'll start at your end of the dais tonight for comments.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Commissioner Brian Helms.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so it's been a long night. So no comments other than Merry Christmas, and I'll echo Happy New Year as well. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a very healthy, happy, prosperous New Year. And I just ask for everyone to travel and make very safe decisions while you're out celebrating this holiday season.
We've been here long enough. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Please be safe.
I've enjoyed spending the night with y'all.
There's cops in the back.
And I hope y'all all have a Merry Christmas.
And with that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, staff. Thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas.